Okay, we are all set, Connie. And so I will officially gavel us in and wish you good morning. I do call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for invocation this morning. This morning, we have with us from our Catholic Diocese, the Most Reverend Bishop Mulvey. Also, would you please remain standing after invocation as we will move straight into the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flags?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we come together in this room, we ask for your blessing upon each one of us. For those of us who are appointed to service and those who are elected to service, may we always keep in mind the mandate that we have come not to be served, but to serve. Service is your gift to us and our gift to those whom we serve in this area. During the summertime, we ask you to keep safe, the children and those who are vulnerable, watch after the poor, and may all the decisions that are made here today be at the service of those most in need, for the betterment of our community, our county, and for those who are our neighbors. Bless this meeting with your Holy Spirit and give us always the courage and the wisdom to speak for those who cannot speak. And we ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much for the clerk. It was 8:35 when we began this morning, and I will note for the record that it is June 8th, 2022, and we are here in Commissioners' courtroom inside the Nuasis County Courthouse located at 901 North Leopard. All Commissioners are present. We do have Commissioner Brent Chesney online, participating through virtual Zoom. And because all of us are here, I do certify to the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I'll move on and announce that this is the time that if you have any conflicts of interest, the disclosure should be declared at this time. This course regards any items on this agenda, and for the audience members who do have conflicts will refrain from voting and are asked to refrain from discussion on such items. If any conflicts are discovered later in the meeting, we can disclose them at this time. Are there any to be received? Seeing that we have none, I'll move quickly to the safety briefing and ask Rebecca to please address all of us, and I ask you to give her your attention.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, June 8th, is being held in the Nuasis County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium, past the human resources office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom, and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Believe control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today, who will be responsible for dialing 911, will be Connie. In the event of an evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse, and assemble in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. And that's our safety briefing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, Commissioners, I am going to advance one item and one item only ahead of public comment in order so that Bishop Mulvey may attend an important meeting that he has this morning with the Diocese. It's item G2, and it's in recognition of the Feast of Corpus Christi Day, as well as the 110th anniversary of the Diocese of Corpus Christi. And so I would ask that Belinda come forth at this time. Belinda, would you proceed with the reading?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Whereas in 1519, the Spanish explorer Alonso Alvarez de Piñeda discovered a spectacular bay on what is now the southern coast of Texas, whereas this lush semi-tropical bay was discovered on the Roman Catholic Feast Day of Corpus Christi, whereas this area, as well as the Diocese of Corpus Christi, was named for the Feast of Corpus Christi, whereas the Diocese of Corpus Christi is celebrating the 110th anniversary of its founding in March of 1912, having been the victorit apostolate of Brownsville until then, and whereas the Diocese of Corpus Christi has grown to include numerous parishes and Catholic schools providing services to the Nuasis County community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County that June 16th, 2022, is hereby declared Feast of Corpus Christi Day in Nuasis County, commemorating our community's rich history, and the court further hereby congratulates the Diocese of Corpus Christi on its 110th anniversary.
Thank you so much. And Bishop, would you like to make any comments this morning just about the celebration that we're about to have? We do need you on the mic, only so that those online can hear.
No, it's a great honor to receive the proclamation, and the Feast of Corpus Christi is a universal feast throughout the world for the Church, but particularly here, many recognize that this is the only Diocese of the Catholic Church that has named Corpus Christi. So it's a great honor for us to recognize that and also to have this proclamation this morning. So we are very grateful, and on the 16th, there will be a procession through the city in the late afternoon, so anyone is welcome to certainly join us for that. So thank you very, very much for this recognition.
And the procession actually will end...
Begins at the cathedral and goes up to Mother Teresa Shelter and back down on La Pan.
And actually ends right in front of our jail, so...
Right.
For those of you that would like to join us...
We come in front of the jail for a little bit, too. Yeah, thank you.
So...
To pray for those who are most in need.
Exactly. Well, thank you. It's wonderful to have you here this morning. We thank you for the beautiful invocation, and it'll keep us in the right spirit, I believe. But more importantly, just there are so many ways that the Diocese is involved with education, with healthcare, with the vulnerabilities. And so it's wonderful to be able to celebrate the 110th year of this Diocese, which most of us can see as we approach this courthouse that work here, so...
Just to let you know, I wasn't here 110 years ago, but I am the eighth bishop of Corpus Christi, so...
We're glad you're here, and I've always been inspired to do this by somebody, a constituent, who wrote to me. And so I know that while we're celebrating the Feast of Corpus Christi, Alonso Alvarez de Piñeda on that day, my grandmother wrote an entire book on de Piñeda, but I've been asked by a constituent to always honor and remember that we were not the first on these lands, that these lands were occupied, that there were indigenous people here before our arrival, and we honor that in the spirit of honoring all our history. So, thank you, Bishop, and I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On this beautiful occasion, would we be able to take a photo with you before we move on?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Belinda, I'll ask you to... Or actually, who has the... Kara is working on it.
Well, because he is not here, but we'll get into them after...
Sure, may I just borrow it for the photo? Bishop, Commissioner Chesney will sign for you, and maybe Chaima, would you be so kind as to return next week for the... Okay, for pickup? item F, which is public comment, and I'll call Mr. Eduardo Canales. He will be first, followed by Mr. Larry Furkin. Mr. Canales, good morning, sir. I'll just remind the audience, public comment, we usually have a digital clock that will appear. We ask you to be respectful of it. However, I won't cut you off in mid-sentence. Please know that you are always welcome here to speak your mind and to share your comments. And you may proceed anytime.
I will be short, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners and Judge Canales. Some of you may know me, Eduardo Canales. I'm the Director of the South Texas Human Rights Center and a core member for the greater good. I'm here today in behalf of CAPE, the Coastal Alliance, to protect our environment. CAPE is a coalition of 23 community groups and environmental organizations with members all over Nuasis County and the coastal bend. Our mission is to protect our local environment and health by stopping the massive fossil fuel industrial build-out before it brings more toxic pollution to our community. I ask that you add our presentation, that you add a presentation from CAPE to the agenda and at your next meeting, three CAPE members will be... We're allotted time to be on the agenda, you know, three CAPE members will take the 10 minutes that are allotted, and three organizations have prepared a presentation for all of you regarding desalination. I know that that is a very, very controversial issue, and we believe that the Nuasis County Commissioners and the court here can take a very, very strong leadership position regarding this issue, as has been debated in this community and continues to be debated in this community. The presenters will touch on our community's history of environmental racism, the harmful consequences of desalination, and readily available alternative water sources. We look forward to the opportunity to discuss desalination in depth with you in our near future. Our community needs a champion to step forward and who will defend public health and protect the environment and create green jobs. We believe that this champion can be the Nuasis County Commissioners' Court, even though, you know, you're kind of caught in the middle between the city and the port of Corpus Christi. I really believe that the leadership from the County Commissioners' Court will have a strong bearing in this community. And maybe that champion can be the Commissioners' Court. So I thank you for your time. I said I would be short and continue to look forward to making that presentation to the County Commissioners' Court. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Mr. Larry Furkin, followed by Mr. Bobby Chestnut.
Here again to talk about the digits that haven't been taken care of. In my 38 and a half years working for a refinery, I've learned that you can't just solve the problem where it's at. I've been taught that you got to look not only at the problem where it's at, but upstream and downstream. And choke points can also be a problem. Wherever you have choke points, you're never going to get it out any further with it. So upstream, we've got our northwest estates that has a retention pond, has nowhere else to go but to a downstream choke point, which is down at 1889. The water comes across the street over there at the Memorial Cemetery, and then across the... Then when it backs up there, then it also backs up and comes into 52B, where these people over in Siesta Loop live. They've cleaned out the ditches there, okay? That's fine. It's created just a moat, but they still have a choke point, where if you have a choke point, you're not going to get out with any more than what that choke point allow you. And that's the situation right there. That's where the problem is. Now, downstream, we've got County Road 50 ditch that hasn't been cleaned out, and also the ditch that we got to work on, the mayor of Robstown. But the ditches that need to be cleaned, that are still y'all's problem, is in Nuasis County, that's on County Road 50, and also downstream over there on 1889. Those ditches haven't been addressed. So saying we should be happy with what's been done? No, we're not happy. We want to get the rest of the work done, then we'll be happy. It's like getting your oil changed and having had the filter changed out as well. It's not a complete job. So we'd like for y'all to complete your job, and all this study that's going on doesn't take no engineer to figure out what needs to be done. So thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bobby Chestnut, followed by... And I'm sorry, is it Bernie? No? Bernice? I'm stuck on this one, but I'm going to have Ida maybe help me with the next name to prepare, but...
Is it the name right after mine?
Yes.
It's Larry Buckscamper.
Oh, my goodness. Boy, I'm going to have to really work on that writing. Sorry about that.
He also lives in the Valley View subdivision where I live, and what Mr. Furkin was also retaining to...
I lost my good glasses, and I'm wearing somebody else's, and that is a big problem. But anyway, thank you for helping me. So Larry will be next. Please proceed, Mr. Chestnut.
Thank you, Commissioners and Judge, and also the county staff. As Mr. Furkin reiterated, the ditches were dug out in front of our homes, but the choke point down at the back has not been cleaned out and enlarged and further downstream from that. My point is, I've sat up here several months ago and heard all of y'all say that you need to work together. I've not seen that. I've not seen a good teamwork. I'm not being very critical, but it's just a fact that I see. We're still waiting on, I guess, a final report from the half-company on the drainage. But our problem is immediate today. Of course, we have a dry ban right now, but we still have the possibility of any week of the hurricanes coming in with this heavy rains and flooding to begin again. I have not personally had water in my house. I've had it up to my door, and I live on the far end of where the choke point is. But is there not any way that we can get a contractor? Is there any money that can be arranged to hire a contractor, since Mr. Patel said the county works employment is way down, and they don't have the people to work daily on a certain project, they skip around quite a bit, to get these at least two main ditches cleaned out? There's trees in them that need to be removed. If nothing else, take something in there and remove the trees to where we've seen mattresses up against trees with tires, doors, plywood, all kinds of debris, couches, big-screen TVs in these ditches that are creating the damn part. We're still wondering where we're at on this funding coming from the government on this project, and we're seeing more and more money spent on surveys and all that, but we're not seeing any equipment or anybody there. I understand that all the Commissioners got together and donated some of their funds to Mr. Chesney to rebuild Bob Hall Pier, but the pier doesn't help our drainage problem anymore. I'm not being critical of the pier. It's a very, very fine piece of equipment for the county and for tourism, but us constituents need a lot more help than the tourists need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Larry, I apologize. Couldn't read it, but it's my eyes, not your writing.
My writing isn't the best. It's deteriorated along with the rest of me.
No worries, sir.
Okay. I live in Valley View. I'm on Siesta Loop. I'm in the corner where all the water comes through the back of my house, behind my house or in front of me. And I have a 30 by 40 workshop behind the house and a 10 by 20, and they flood every time it rains a lot.
Yes.
And the ditches that are clean, that's good, but like Bobby and Larry said, the choke point beyond is not repaired, not fixed, and I'd just like to have that done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And finally, is it Pat Galloway? Good morning.
My name is Patricia Galloway. I live at 3628 County Road 52B. I am the second house from this choke point that the young men were talking about. Right there, we live in a fishbowl, is what they've created with our neighborhood, and I am the second house down from where that choke point is. We flooded on May 19th. We flooded on May 8th. The water on May 8th was twice as deep in my house as it was the first time. Now, I don't know if anybody here has ever had your house flooded, but it is a horrible experience. And somebody said, I heard somebody said a couple of meetings ago, why do these people keep showing up? We keep showing up because we need the problem resolved. We need that at the corner of 52B in Siesta Loop. We need that cleaned out, and we need the drainage to go down the Water District Canal and drain away from the neighborhood. Ever since they built the lakes, that water floods over 1889 and comes straight to our neighborhood, and it is a real problem. And somebody said, well, we're the only ones complaining. I don't know where the other people are that get flooded. Why aren't they here? If they do come, I don't know who they are, I've never met them, but we seem to be the only ones that keep showing up. And I'm proud of that. We have to keep at this because when the hurricanes come again, we're going to get flooded again, and it's going to be worse. And I know they dug the ditches out. We appreciate that. But all it did is make a deeper fishbowl because the water still can't drain. And years ago, there used to be culverts under 52B, but when they redid 52B, they took all those culverts out. And my husband at the time argued with everybody he could about leaving the culverts under the road because it drained the water out from the fishbowl. But they wouldn't listen to him. They took them all out, and now we have this major problem. And, you know, I went to a meeting in Robstown a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about the drainage, I think it was three different counties and all the drainage and the problems and the studies they've done. I don't know what all these studies are good for if we can't get anything done, and the study says that we're okay, there's nothing else to be done for our neighborhood. That is not true. You have got to clean those ditches out. Larry lives right there on the corner where that water just stops. I'm on this side where the water stops. He is on the other side of the road. But I just ask y'all to please address those ditches being cleaned out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody online? Connie, deputy, would you make sure that we're all good to go? All right. I'll just remind everybody that during public comment, if you've never been in the courtroom before, you might say, why aren't they addressing it? Or why aren't they saying anything? During public comment, we don't necessarily answer back, but in this matter, I will invite those who are here on drainage to perhaps listen in to the conversation that we'll have during our general information reports regarding flooding at the beginning of this presentation. But first, we move through the general agenda, and it is now time to go into the adopting of the following resolutions and proclamations, and I'll start with in recognition of West Osso ISD's inaugural year of their Youth Government Academy program, and we ask you to direct your attention to... Judge, those students are scheduled to be here, but they have not yet arrived? Let's pause. I was looking, but I didn't know if they were in the hallway. Just give us a, you know... I'm trying to keep track, and I'll let the court know. No worries. Belinda, let's move on to recognition of June 2022, this month, as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and we have some visitors here with us.
Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving customs, rituals, and traditions. And whereas, as we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. And whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a community concern affecting thousands of people across Texas. And whereas abuse affected more than 118,208 older adults and people with disabilities in Texas in 2021. And whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly underreported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And whereas adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds in all communities. And whereas elder abuse is everyone's business, it's important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elder abuse. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County does hereby proclaim the month of June 2022 to be Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Nuasis County, and urges all residents to work together to reduce abuse and neglect of older adults and people with disabilities.
Thank you. I'll make that motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. And in the discussion period, we do have some guests. Belinda, would you like to invite them to... Would somebody like to speak on this matter?
Don't be shy. Come on.
Well, while you're making your way, we'll just comment. My grandmother's 99 years old. Well, she'll be 99 on August the 5th, so I hope I'll get to say that. But, you know, I realize the frailty of our vulnerable elderly, and it's not their bodies often. It's just the idea that so many mean people out there prey upon them in so many different ways. And abuse can be physical, it can be verbal, it can also be scams that are out there. And I know that Sheriff Hooper is on the line. He was just on television just a couple of weeks ago, trying to urge people to not become vulnerable to some certain internet and telephone scams. So I just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing, and please offer a few words.
I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing us for the month of June. I know my fellow coworkers and I, we care very much about the elderly and the population that we work with, whether it be elderly or disabled. Like the proclamation said, we investigate abuse, neglect, and exploitation, but beyond investigating, we also provide services. So we try to alleviate the abuse, neglect, or exploitation by providing community resources or funding that we have through APS to purchase, like simple things that we might take for granted, food, pest control supplies, wipes, diapers, things like that, so...
And if people want to reach out to you, there's a number or report... And if people want to reach out to you, there's a number, or report neglect or abuse, is there a number that they can reach you at?
Yes, we have a one-eight-hundred number, but I don't have it on me.
Okay, maybe one of your colleagues, um, here it comes, it's good, we're being, we're broadcasting, it's on video, and-
I know it, is it a quiz? Is this a quiz? I still remember that.
Let's go, John. You, you can-
Um, yes, anyone can make a referral, you can do it anonymously, um, or you can leave your name, and we'll contact you. Um, you can call our state hotline, um, number, it's eight-hundred-two-five-two-five-four-zero-zero.
Very good, you had it, same number?
Same.
Thank you. I just think it's important for us to know, and most of the time when we have these proclamations, you should know that we become messengers. We have a new, um, system that we work here as far as social media, and we hope that we can provide this important information to our community, so we'll echo that number. And, uh, and again, thank you for championing, um, this, this very serious, uh, topic of, of elder abuse. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. And why don't we, would you like to, for the purposes of creating more awareness, take a photo? And once again, we will, um, ask you to come back so that Commissioner Chesney can sign Shall we, Jenny, they're ready? Okay, we're gonna go back, apparently the students were here, so for the clerk, it's G-one, and, um- I'll prepare it as they walk in, but again, this is in recognition of West Oso's Independent School District's, um, Youth Government Academy Program. This is their inaugural year, they've been with us here at the courthouse, uh, this week, and they are learning all about government civics, and it's incredibly exciting to have them here. Welcome, everybody. We're going to ask that you direct your attention to Ms. Belinda Inahosa, and she will read a proclamation.
Whereas Nueces County, with the invaluable help of the American Federation of Teachers, has invited the faculty and the students of West, of West Oso Independent School High School to create a summer enrichment program to educate and excite future leaders about their role in governing their world. And whereas student members of the inaugural year of Youth Government Academy will meet with county and city officials and department heads to understand what role each plays in governing of Nueces County, and take that information back to their families and peers to deepen community understanding of the county's role in governing, policing, and law. Whereas the West Oso ISD Youth Government Academy participants were honored as follows: Ariana Barone, Liliana Cantu, Sidney Cantu, Lyric Carpenter, Leslie Davis, Victoria Garcia, Isabel Limón, Luis Maracas, Isaiah Mock, Francisco Mireles, Elijah Reed, Azaneth Solis, Brian Solis, and Jada Whitfield. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Nueces County, that the court hereby recognizes the West Oso Independent School District as the first school to help build and participate in Nueces County's Youth Government Academy, the American Federation of Teachers for their leadership in bringing enrichment opportunities to students, and the West Oso students for excellence in exploring their roles as future leaders of their world.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? And I'll second. And in the discussion, I'm, I see Nancy Vetta here from AFT, but would you all like to introduce, uh, we've got the superintendent, we've, I'm, I'm happy for anybody, Conrado, would you like to come forward? I think it's probably good that you start, but introduce your team here to us. We know, uh, these amazing students now by name because of the proclamation, but there are many behind, uh, the scenes.
Yes, and thank you, Judge, and Commissioners, for allowing us to be with you this morning. Uh, several months ago, we started this plan, and, uh, in a partnership with AFT and, and Judge Klein, and it's been, uh, a wonderful opportunity for kids to learn all about you and how our county government works. And by all accounts, everything that I've been hearing is that our kids are excited. They're a little nervous this morning, uh, because, uh, they had, they have, uh, a presentation, but, uh, one of the things that we're doing at West Oso on top of many other things, like all districts, is enrichment activities. Expose our kids to the city of Corpus Christi and what's going on in our world, including our county. Uh, so they're well-prepared, they're ready to go. These young people applied to be with us, to give up their summer and learn more about, uh, city government, so we're extremely proud of them. Two of our teachers are here, Ms. Babcock, Ms. Washington, where are you? There you are, and where's Ms. Babcock? There, there, there she is. They're wonderful people, they've been with the kids throughout the day and enjoying this particular relationship. At the end of the day, our goal is to allow our kids through this academy to truly come back to our district because they're our future leaders of West Oso ISD. So, uh, with that in mind, again, we thank you, Judge, and we thank the Commissioners for allowing us for this opportunity. We thank Nancy Vetta and her leadership, and her team, uh, for allowing us, uh, to participate with them, and Judge Klein, uh, I just can't leave her out. She heard me speak with, uh, uh, Jag at a, at a park recently, and she got excited, and I got excited, Nancy, everybody's got fired up. West Oso's a well-kept secret in this community, and we don't want it that way. We're just as competitive and as strong as any other ISD in our area, and so we ask you to come over and visit anytime, and, and let us show you what we're about. These kids are testimonial of our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Garcia, and Commissioner Gonzalez, you had a chance to visit with them. Would you like to, uh, offer?
Well, I just want to say, uh, well, again, this is the third day, right? So you're almost there, and I know you're giving a speech today, or you're saying, you're doing a presentation, so I know that's why you're nervous or whatever, so take a deep breath, right? And get ready to go, uh, but remember, when you walk out of here after this week, you will have a lot of knowledge that you're gonna take with you. And not, and then you go back to the school, you're gonna use that knowledge. And like Mr. S, Mr. Garcia said, we expect you to go back and be the leaders of West Oso. But you're gonna be leading, you're not gonna be following, you're gonna be leaders. We've got too many followers already, we need leaders. And I know you can, I know you can do that. When you become a leader, you could become successful, okay? So stay with it, and remember what I said, what does Nike say? Just do it. Very good, guys. Good luck, God bless you.
Thank you all so much. Um, I just wanted to offer, and I know you all have a very strict schedule and agenda, Judge Klein, welcome. Thank you for being, um, providing this Leadership Academy for these kids. It's never been more important in our nation's history to understand civics, and maybe you guys don't know this, but just kind of a fun fact is it was, uh, Justice Sandra Day O'Connor, um, way back, if you don't know who she is, we're gonna make you look it up, but she was the very first female Supreme Court Justice, and she created a group called, uh, really a platform called iCivics, which really is a lot like what you're doing right now, and so if you need tools or resources, jump online, and you'll see that it's now being carried forward by one of our, uh, uh, now Latina U.S. Supreme Court Justices, Sonia Sotomayor, so another great champion for our community of color, and she has carried the torch of Justice O'Connor, and you're carrying it by everything that you're doing here. So you and I still haven't had a chance to visit, so I'm gonna invite you as you, if you have any time today, take a look at the televisions, um, that are around on the third floor, you'll get to see our court in action. And if you look at our agenda, can we make sure that they get a copy of the agenda, uh, before they leave Maggie, to their teachers? Uh, because this agenda today, like all agendas, but this one has some really important civic, um, concepts that will be discussed, debated, and hopefully acted upon, and they include mental health and, um, infrastructure, resolutions about equality, all kinds of things that you might find interesting. So I just want to invite you to make certain that you get a pic, picture of that agenda in your mind, because this is your house. So right before you walked in, what we did, um, per our own agenda was public comment. So, public comment is a time where anybody can sign up on a matter that they want to share comments, opinions, thoughts, concerns, criticisms, praise with our court. And so I just wanted to invite you all, if anybody does have public comment, I'd be most happy to reopen it at this time, to give you the opportunity to say anything that you want about your experience, what you're learning, a concern in your community, um, and we'll do that right after Ms. Vetta.
Thank you. I'm the, Dr. Nancy Vetta, I'm the proud president of the award-winning Corpus Christi American Federation of Teachers. And first, I'd like to say thank you, uh, Judge and Commissioners Court, and I also wanted to mention that it was Judge Ina Klein and Jenny Dorsey, who is with you, who, uh, initiated this, and then they brought me aboard, and I absolutely said yes. And, but I did, do also want to recognize my team.
Yes.
And, uh, of course, Shariae Bird, who works here locally as our representative, and also, uh, Ms. Julie Washington. Now, if you don't know Julie, you should know Julie Washington, because Julie Washington is, uh, our national American Federation of Teachers trainer. She is, uh, nationally renowned in the American Federation of Teachers, she's traveled all over the country training, so we're very fortunate that, uh, we're hoping that next year she'll call, uh, Corpus Christi home, and that she'll move down here. She's currently living in Houston, but she's based out of Washington, D.C. Julie, this is Julie Washington.
Yes.
And, uh, so in that, I would like to say that we're very proud of these students. Uh, we've been working with them, and they're really conscientious, they're empathetic and compassionate. So at this point, I'd like to bring Azaneth up, and they're going to introduce themselves, and they're gonna go around, you'll be next, you, 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 and then you, 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 and then you. Got it? All right, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Azaneth Solis. I'm going to be a senior this upcoming year at West Oso High School, and my concern is, uh, the homeless population here in Corpus Christi. So, uh, I have a pre-existing idea already set in mind, um, with a small home community here for the homeless people, and I also want to include, uh, a rehab center, and, and although it's, it's expensive for, um, just regular people on the basis to go and get rehab and therapy, I'm thinking that, um, college students can go and volunteer their time to get that real-world experience to help these people and to give revival to their lives so that they know that, um, they can, they have another chance, and that the support here in our community can help them renew their lives.
You're doing great. And just so you know, I'm ready to say amen to everything you just said, so keep going.
Well, okay. So I, um, another idea I had was, we can include a cafeteria and sup, uh, give restrooms and bathrooms for them to use altogether, and, uh, this, this cafeteria can, um, be worked from, um, students in high schools and anyone who just has the heart to give out to others, uh, to get community service hours, and a lot of schools have the program avid, and I know those kind of students are willing to go out and help out in the community.
Yes.
So.
Thank you so much. Thank you, well done. Judge Klein, will you grab the mic?
A future general contractor, this lady is going to infiltrate the predominantly male field, and you should all watch her.
Awesome. And also, I'm gonna ask, um, that, um, after they leave, you'll still have time, uh, in the room right now are members of M H I D. You will, it'd be so nice if you would stand up and go meet with them, just give them your cards, they can learn, I mean, you just got your, your future volunteers right there. Chief Shower, I mean, I don't know how much better it gets coming right from, from the voices of our youth. Uh, we also have CCPD here and, and the, kind of the galvanizer behind mental health issues, including homeless. So, anyway, guys, you come to the right spot this morning. Good morning, sir, please, please proceed.
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Ryan Solis, and I am going to be a junior at West Oso High School.
Okay.
My idea for Corpus Christi would be a newer and hopefully more efficient drug rehab center for people struggling with drug addiction. A couple ideas I have of this would be a more comfortably, comfortable and relaxing environment that can allow them to open up more freely and talk about their drug usage. And then another idea I have is for volunteers who have either experience with drug usage or people who have experienced people use drugs, to apply to help bring in familiarity with these people. And then finally, there should be efficient funding for this program to make sure that everyone gets the best of their experience when they are working there.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. Well done, sir. Next? Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Um, my name is Sidney Cantu, and I am a junior at West Oso High School. Um, one change that I would like to see within the city of Corpus Christi is the revitalization of the north and west side of town. Instead of keeping these sides of town industrialized and rundown, I think there should be more attractions, new homes, new parks, gyms, and more. A solution to this could be building residential neighborhoods, shopping centers, and more sources of entertainment. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I am Ariana Barone, and I'm going to be a junior attending West Oso High School. One concern I had was the safety in our schools, especially with what has been happening around in this country lately, and especially in Texas. I would like for there to be an increase in our student safety, and I would- I would like for there to be an increase in our student safety, and I would like to see it. I would like to see our local government and our city putting an effort into making our schools safer. And some ideas I had for this was changing our drills. One thing we can change about it is having barricades. I know our drills, we do not barricade, we just hide in a dark space. And I don't think that can be enough anymore. I think we should do more to ensure our safety.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Judge Barbara Canales and peers. I'm Lisa Marquez, and I'm a ju, and I'm a junior at West Osso High School, and one day I will run for Congress. I'm here before you to share concern, that, to share concern that involves Corpus Christi and is affecting many. Corpus Christi is now ranked number three in least affordable cities in the nation. Here in Corpus Christi, just like across the nation, the house market is at a high due to many people moving to somewhat smaller cities. The amount of houses and the production of houses that has been slowly increasing is not enough to help the already struggling house market, affecting many low-income families who are already struggling to purchase food and other essentials. We need to attract those bigger businesses that would be beneficial and provide better wages and also attract people to Corpus. I want to point out the work already currently being done, like the James Avery factory that's going to be open here and Amazon's new warehouse, bringing revenue to the city that can be invested into our infrastructure and better entertainment areas for family. Once again, attracting people, businesses, and money that went for, for families and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Francisco, and my favorite subject is English because I like reading and writing. And I want to talk about the pojos because they can mess up the cars and, and the tires. That's why we need to fix them, and thank you.
Of course.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Victoria Garcia, and I'm a junior at West Osso High School. One thing that has brought to my attention is the homeless. I would like to have shelters in each part of the city where they can have a place to be safe at and not have to worry about the stuff that has been going on in this world, a place for them to call home. Another thing that I would like to help in their community to make more beautiful, and when visitors come, is the littering. To have at least one, like gathering that we can all go and pick up the trash and just help out around at least once a month. The way we can help both, both of those problems or things that I've seen is to have the homeless come and contribute to us in the community is help cleaning up the littering and picking up and making it more of a beautiful place to people to come and eventually call themselves here home. And we can help the homeless bring together and give them a minimum wage to help them get on their feet and eventually have a place to call their home and build themselves a family and eventually become one of y'all and have a place that they succeed in their life. So thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jada Wayfield, and I'm a junior at West Osso High School. What I would like to change in the country and the city is to make our schools safer. I would like to change the drills every semester or every other year. And also, I would like to, I would like to add bulletproof locks and coats on the doors so the doors won't get shot down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Good morning. My name is Lyric Carpenter, and I'm a junior at West Osso High School. So something that I was kind of thinking about was how we don't really get taught about, like, different cultures of the world at school. We like might celebrate Black History Month in February and Hispanic Heritage Month in like September and October, but like after that, it's over, like we don't go deeper into discussions about that. So I was thinking we could implement, like, learning about different cultures of the world specifically into a class that's already existing or create a class that is specifically for learning about the different cultures of the world, just so we can get a better idea of the different people that are surrounding us and just to have like that knowledge. Because some people don't know about what other people deal with on a regular basis or how they celebrate holidays, how they interact with their families. So I just feel like that would be important to learn at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners Court. My name is Isabel Limon. I am a senior at West Osso High School. The change I would like to make is the low-income families having trouble doing pretty much anything. Yes, we have Medicaid, Medicare, welfare. But there's like so many standards that you have to meet before you're actually considered for those programs. And I want to specifically speak on teens' mental health. It is so important these days. But there are so many like, like, it takes time to get like set up with the therapist to talk to, with anyone to talk to. Counseling services are always full, the appointments are so many like months out, and you don't know how many attempts a person could have tried already. So I would like to, one idea I had was putting like, coming up with like programs, like kind of like AA, we don't have much of that here, and I know it's for like alcoholics and stuff, but like programs like that, like kids can join, and they don't have to worry so much about the cost or if they even qualify for those types of things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alasia Reed, and I'm going to be a senior at West Osso High School this coming year. And a topic that I would really like to focus on today is prison reform. I feel that prisons are very, very considered, like they're looked at as very animalistic places. And I think that GED programs or even just trade school or something like that could, should be implemented in our prisons as well as limitation on the isolation of people with mental health. It's professionally proven that people with mental health issues work better in groups, and I think that the prison should not isolate someone just because of something they have going on in their own head. I also think it would be beneficial for prisons to have ways for prisoners to express themselves creatively. And I think that we should also build rehab centers for people who just got out of prison because I feel like the city kind of sets themselves up for failure because when prisoners get out, they have nowhere to go and, and they don't, they don't know how to live in the real world. So I think that places should, they should, we should build places for them to go and apply for jobs and things like that because when a prisoner gets out, they apply for a job and they don't get it because they've been in prison. So I think the city really sets themselves up for that one. And the best things about everything that I have listed to be implemented in the prison is that it could be used as a rewards program or an incentive program. So if a prisoner thinks, maybe if, and it will help with the behavior problem in the prison too. So I feel like if a prisoner thinks, oh, well, if I behave, then I can go and I can learn how to be a carpenter in this program that they have here. And I also think that there should be implementation of group therapy. And I also think that pastors should also be able to go into prisons, specifically pastors with experience in prison. There, there's a lot of those all around the world, and I think that should really be implemented in our prisons. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Dr. Vetta.
But Judge Gina Klein would like to say something. Don't, weren't they great?
Fantastic.
West Osso bears. Thank you. Judge Gina Klein would like to make.
Judge Klein.
Judge Canales, Commissioners, thank you all for allowing our kids to make this presentation. Commissioner Gonzalez, thank you for joining us Monday morning to welcome the kids. If this is our future, I'm so excited to live in the future because these kids have some of the best ideas I have heard lately by watching the national politics, local politics. I'm so proud of these kids. This is not a script that was written for them. This is them. This is them talking, and they're ready to work for our community, for us. So please give them a round of applause. Thank you.
Fantastic, guys. All those in favor?
Excuse me, Judge, may I say something, please?
Yes.
I also want to congratulate everybody that got this together. I've known Mr. Garcia for a long time. We went to the same elementary, and he's always been an outstanding person. But I'm trying to tell this young people, I know you all are gonna graduate, gonna do great things, but don't forget Corpus Christi. Come back home and implement what you're talking about. You make me so proud. Thank you very much.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. So what we'd love to do now, because we're gonna have, you know, the future President of the United States in this room, definitely a congressman, most likely
Judges.
Yeah, judges, just the pillars of our community. I would like to memorialize this so I can say I knew you when. So would you honor us with a photo? Some of you can come back here and maybe some of you up front. Judge Klein, we could bring the administration as well with Jenny Dorsey as well. I mean, this is a picture you're gonna want to hang in your, in your offices. And again, for the members of our audience, if you feel like you can reach out to this group, will you make certain that you touch base with their, their teachers that are here with them? You can make a big impact on their lives. I'll just hang out over here with you. Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Chat.
Wait, 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 don't go anywhere. They'll take our motion as rules passed.
Priscilla can take it for us.
I'll take it.
Thank you.
I'll do Siri.
Don't you dare smile.
Yeah.
One, two, three. One more.
So proud of you guys.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all.
Alrighty. Well, as we get our quorum back here on the bench, I think that was well worth your time this morning. For those of you that are here on agenda items, this was not planned, I promise you. That is the truth as it's spoken from those that we should be listening to. So I'm just like, I think the bishop just set the tone this morning. He's just bringing us blessings because these are not electeds. These are the children that understand what our problems are, and they're asking us to address them. It's pretty, pretty wonderful what we just heard. Not sure where everybody went, but as you know, or maybe you don't, I need three physical Commissioners here. Oh, there you are. Sorry. This, this thing is blocking me. But do we want to wait for them or no, for Gonzalez? I'll tell you what, we'll just move on, but if you go ahead and get him, that'd be great. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the item, which is item G four in recognition of the week of June 3rd through June 11th as Pride Week in our community. And Belinda will also have a resolution that's important. We'll just make sure those doors are closed. The cacophony there. Deputy, would you mind so much just gently tell them to take it down just a notch on their volume outside? You know what? There it is. Go ahead. Thank you.
Whereas Pride Corpus Christi, a local nonprofit organization created in 2016, is celebrating its sixth annual Pride Week from June 3rd through the 11th, 2022. Whereas Pride Week is dedicated to commemorating the anniversary of the US Supreme Court's marriage equality ruling and honoring the past contributions and celebrating the future of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual community. And whereas Pride Corpus Christi is an annual festival focused on commemorating, educating, and celebrating LGBTQIA equality and human rights. Pride is an event that celebrates love and diversity within the Corpus Christi, the Coastal Bend, the state, the nation, and the world. And whereas Pride celebrations worldwide attract millions of LGBTQIA individuals, families, allies, and friends to parades, picnics, parties, workshops, symposia, concerts, and memorials. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuaces County does hereby proclaim the week of June 3rd through the 11th, 2022 as Pride Week in Nuaces County and encourages all citizens of Nuaces County to join us in celebrating the dignity, strength, passion, dedication, and commitment of the LGBTQIA community in the Coastal Bend.
Thank you, Belinda. Is there a motion for such proclamation?
Second.
Motion in a second. And is there anybody here that would like to acknowledge, thank you? And also, we'll ask you also to just identify.
Okay. My name is Jonathan Swindle, and I am the, I make a little creaky noise. I am the board president of Pride Corpus Christi. I am also a native of Bishop, Texas, I'm born and raised. And there's been a lot of discussion about leadership here this morning with the group that was just before us. And I actually moved away and I went to University of Maine and lived in Colorado, and later ended up coming back, and I've conducted a business here now for 10 years. And I've done a lot of work through nonprofits here in the community. And I, I agree with you that it is important that we make and foster Corpus Christi in the county of Nuaces County as a place that, that is affirming and welcoming to our future and to our youth so that we know and they know that this is a place that they can prosper. I just want to thank you all. I just want to thank you all as well for the opportunity, for the visibility for our community to have here at this time. It's greatly appreciated and very important. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay, wonderful. We also, I should have said this to the last group, but all of these resolutions can be picked up if you wouldn't mind after Commissioner Chesney assigns them. But we would like the opportunity to present it to you at this moment. Let me, let me just, I lost my shoe.
Are you there?
Thank you.
Do it, man, again.
Hello, Jay.
Doing good, doing good. You're doing alright?
Hi, Bill. Great to have you here.
Hi.
One for Priscilla.
Sorry, I lost my wifi. Did I make the picture there?
No, he was just saying he lost his wifi during the picture.
In order to keep continuity, I kept all the resolutions and proclamations together, but while we were taking one of them, we had one more gentleman come in for public comment, and that's Herbie Garza. So at this time for the clerk, I'm reopening public comment for the limited purpose of Mr. Garza visiting with us. Good morning. Good morning, Herbie. There is a clock right there for your viewing, and we ask that you just respect the time, and I'll try to honor keeping all your words from being interrupted.
Hey, my name is Herbie Garza. I live in 37th and Reynosa. Morning, Commissioners and Barbara Canales. I'm here in behalf of JJ Serrano. He's the coordinator to the Veterans Affairs on RTA, and he's really great. Matter of fact, he's number one in the state of Texas because I think they have 250 people that represent for claims, and he's really doing a good job. He stepped up as soon as Martin Longoria got that job over there at the VA and the hospital, you know, so that's really great. You know, and I'm here because I think he should deserve a better salary. I don't know what it is, but I think like $90,000 because he does two jobs. He does a lot of stuff, and it's a lot of work. And I know you all do a lot of work, too. But I just want to thank you all for allowing me the time here. Right now, I hold different positions. I'm president of LACLA, vice commander and advocate for the GF1, member of the American Legion, a member of the Little Carers Union. I'm, and I'm trying to remember all the places I have. I have a lot of positions. Oh, and I'm a member of LULAC, Council Number One. And I just want to say that I hope you all look into JJ's salary, you know. I was thinking like $90,000 because it's quite a bit that he does, you know, for a lot of claims. So if anybody wants to know something about anything about the veterans, he's the place to do it. You'll find anything, even the cemetery and everything. I mean, it's great what they're doing here. The person that had three dreams a long time ago was Carlos "Senator" Truon. I don't know if you all remember him, but he had three dreams. One, the cemetery, which we have. Number two, get all the veterans to do, which we do Tuesday, because stores and Staples, it's a roundhouse veterans. Anybody can go. You don't have to be a veteran. You get all the resources, all the information there. And the third one, of course, which we're going to have finished is the hospital. We really need the hospital. So they say in December, but now we're looking at September, so that's great. I just want to thank you for the time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'll close public comment at this time and go right into, I don't see Louis here. There he's right there. It's just, everybody's in, got one little block in my view. Louis, welcome. Good morning to you. It dawns on me that we always ask you to wait, and last time, I think we just completely slid it over our disaster information reports and preparedness. So would you give us an overview? And just so the clerk knows, this is item H1, and it's regarding a recovery, responds, preparedness, on all the different matters, including but not limited to severe weather, flooding, drainage, economic recovery, state and federal assistance. Good morning.
Good morning, Court. Good morning, Judge. So I don't have very much to put out today. What I will do is talk more about what's coming up for weather and a possibility of talking about at some future point extending our burn ban. So let's go down the weather really quickly. So we can expect for this week, the average highs to be about 92 with the heat index of about 101. So what does that mean for us as the county? So when it gets those type of temperatures, we usually like to be in a creature conference, like air conditioning fans, stuff like that, but some people may not have them. So those personnel that have people that, you know, are susceptible to the high heat, please look after them, check on them. You can also talk about the KBDI. So that's the index that we use to measure whether or not we need to have a burn ban or not. Usually about 500s when we talk about burn ban for a sustained period of time. Right now, the KBDI averages about 499. With these upcoming weather and especially with the July 4s coming up, there's not projected to be or forecasted to be any long-term precipitation coming into our area. So that's something we got to think about when we're talking about the possibility of extending the burn Yesterday, we had a case of monkeypox. You know, it's been out there in the atmosphere. I don't know very much about that case or where it comes from or when it started. I will get an update and send it out to the court so you guys can have it. We're still in the pandemic, so COVID-19 is still happening. We had an increase of COVID-19 numbers in Nuaces County as well. I think the current number right now is about 40. So be careful when you go out. So I want to take the opportunity to talk about a couple of things, right? So our mass notification system, since we are in the hurricane season, the use of reverse alert is what we use as a primary mass notification system. So if you don't have reverse alert on your phone, you can find information about reverse alert on our tables outside. You can grab a card. They got a QR code. You can scan it. You can make it however you want to take the information. So you can use that information if you want it by text, or phone, or email. You can dictate how you want to receive that information. Then you can also have it so you can turn it off at a certain time. So if you don't want to hear it about 8 o'clock to about 7 o'clock in the morning, you can shut down the alert system. So that's one thing you need to think about. Steer is another thing I want to talk about, Judge. So the Texas State Emergency Assistance Registry is how we identify people who are medically fragile. The steer program is a great program, but the information is on an annual basis. So if you haven't updated your steer after July 1st, you will have to do so because the state registry will dump all that information, then you have to come back in and re-register. If you need information on steer, that information is on our table out here, has a QR code. You can download it, especially if you're medically fragile or you need help during an evacuation. Understand that if you register and steer, that you may not get help from the county for evacuation. It's going to be dependent on if we have an evacuation order. And the last thing I want to talk about is ERAP. So the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is still out there. I know that people have been calling in to Corpus Christi. They may have gotten this glitch fixed, but you can still call into Corpus. You can still call into the county, and we will direct you to where you need to get help.
Louis, going back to steer. So these are people that have, maybe people in their family or are on oxygen? Would that qualify?
Yes, Judge. So, and a lot of times what you have, so some dialysis location will have a steer registry there. You can kind of register it through dialysis. And some, I don't know about, too many medical facilities may have a steer identification place where you can register there. But what that does for us as a county, if you need help for maybe during a time when there's no power or there's a flood and we need to get you out of there, or we need to kind of flex some assets to you to make sure that you stay alive, we can help you. That registry, we can take it and turn it into a map and then go directly to your location. We also have your phone number in there so we can contact you in case of emergencies. So the steer is a great program for our medically fragile people to be in.
Think of it as like our own Nuaces County Life Alert System, okay? And what Louis is saying is that if we order an evacuation order, then that's when that would come into place. If, there might be scenarios where there is no order, but you still want to move, while we may not be, you know, under that same, we may not have that evacuation location of the fairgrounds, or we would still make certain that you get the information that you need. So it's a really great opportunity to use this hurricane season as your planning season. So it's not just that family plan, but we want to make sure we target all these folks that are medically fragile. So we saw this during winter storm. It is a huge issue, and we need to be ready for this extreme weather season. By the way, this heat is very serious, so be very careful out there. Thanks for the ERAP update. Are there any other questions for Louis before I move on to one maybe potential directive? Any questions, guys?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Louis, on last month, during the meeting, I asked Dale the question. I said he was had to be coming from you. On the daily burn rate, on personnel costs, he had $881.50. He also had employee benefits, 21.66% of $190. The total was $1,072.80. What was that for?
I don't know, Commissioner.
Commissioner, I'll have to get the information. That comes from mine. I didn't ask, I didn't say Louis would be the avenue to get the information. It just wasn't on the agenda at the time of the discussion. I'll get that information for you. We'll have it because it's in a spreadsheet. It's about 55 million bits.
I did ask, and you said to ask Louis, so...
No, I didn't say it, Louis.
Yeah, you did.
No, I did not.
Okay, well, let's do this. You have a question. He's got the potential answer.
Can you give it clarified? Let me know.
Yeah, he'll clarify. You've got a question. He's got the potential answer. So let me go back to what I think would be an important conversation, which is, we're in hurricane season. We seem to hover between extreme heat and drought and extreme weather, as in rains that cause flooding. I would like to see on next agenda, a agenda item from emergency management that deals with this choke point and the backup on 52B, and as well as, I guess it would be County Road 50 as well. In other words, you know, I'm tired, too, you know, as they say, "I'm mad, too, Eddie." And I want these, I want this area cleaned, and we're not getting anywhere. And we have, you know, completely exhausted the remedies that we have, I guess, here internally. So I'm looking for a simple agenda item that allows for the cleaning of this big vegetation in these areas that have been mentioned time and time again, before we get into a situation where these extreme tropical systems come dumping a lot of rain, causing flooding and catastrophic... And so I think, Louis, by working with I-D-A and Belinda, well, really more I-D-A, if you would just hone in on, and you could re-watch the tape because they were very specific about the areas, but I noted down that it's 52B, and of course, there's the issue of County Road 50 as well. So again, the areas are easily defined because these folks are happy to define them for you. And, you know, I just want an agenda item for a contract to get the work done within a reasonable period of time. It's an important tool for emergency management to recognize where there's going to be a threat, and that's our job for preparedness. And let's not argue about, you know, who's supposed to do it or why hadn't it been done. Let's just do it. And that's what I'm ready to do. I'd like to see this done Nuaces County-wide. Maybe we have another bite at that apple, but for today, I want the folks that keep coming back here to know that...
That was my next question, Judge.
That we're listening, and that we'll get that on June 22 agenda.
So we can do this county-wide then? Because I got some areas, too.
I would love to.
I got some areas, too. They're real bad, and people flood. They get water in their houses.
Would you work with I-D-A and Louis? Let's make this part of EM, and that way, and I'll work with you as well on the ideas that we have for funding. But I'm not worried about the funding. I just need to work with you so that you have awareness and you, listen, I mean, let's do it. Now, I'm also going to need the assistance of, you know, Michael Robinson, because this work most likely will not be, it needs to be procured, right? So I'll need double agenda items. I'll need the authority to procure, and that way we can move swiftly. And Louis, I'll just work with you because I think it will help write that narrative as to the justification as to what's happened in the past in the May and the July floods. And God willing, we'll beat, we'll beat Mother Nature.
And where the funding coming from?
Well, number one, I've got, we've got American Rescue Plan Act, okay, that can cover it, because that's literally like Prima. It literally says, "Go fix water and wastewater problems." But if that doesn't work, remember that I have COs that, you know, we all do, that could address some of these issues.
Judge, real quick, just a quick point of order. I think you made the directive, I think discussing it much more...
I agree.
...non-posted, getting it as dangerous territory.
I agree. It's just the Commissioner asked the question, but you're absolutely right. We'll hold. Thank you for bringing us back home. Commissioner, is that all right? We'll hold till?
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
If we can get court management just to pull the entire court on, I mean, we all have areas that we have concerns about flooding. So if we're going to have a conversation for one area, definitely think we need to include the entire county.
Okay.
I agree. I think everybody should be included. I think if we're going to do this for, you know, one area, we should do it for all. And what's been prolonged in this is the boundaries that we were told we couldn't go into, okay? If you're opening it up to anybody can go in there and do work, I'm all for it.
Sounds good. Again, bringing us back home. We're still talking about, you know, flooding preparedness, and that's how I'm, just to let Jeff know, how I'm skirting this agenda item. But, okay, I appreciate it. Last thing, just for awareness, something good happened, and I like reporting it, because FEMA Public Assistance has noticed, and that is, is that we got a word that what's called Category Z for our winter weather. It's our emergency preparedness protective measures for administration was approved by FEMA, which means that some of the dollars that we expended on admin will be coming back home. So...
Where do we add that? What number?
Under General Information Reports, it's FEMA Public Assistance is listed, and I just wanted, I'm updating, that we got some good news from FEMA on that, and we'll provide it to you this week. We just received word. So we'll be able to share that with you, what we can expect. But more dollars in from FEMA is always a good thing. This was on our winter weather only. I don't remember, Louis, if it came in Friday late or Monday, but it's just very, very recent.
It was Friday late, Judge.
Friday late. Friday late, so we'll get it to you. All right, Louis, thank you very much, please always is always be available to all commissioners and uh I noticed Tyler's here, thanks Tyler for being here, I think that steer is a great, great message for these these medically vulnerable uh individuals that live in our county. We want to know who they are, ID them, so we can come to you in case of crisis. Thank you, Louis.
Hey, Jeff, uh one more.
Yes, sir.
So I got the uh the president of the Fire Chiefs Association here to talk about burn bans, if if we can.
Absolutely, I can, um Chief Clack, welcome. Do you want to come on, we're talking disaster preparedness and we just talked to our KB, our our burn index. Uh apparently we're at four ninety-nine, we're just teetering right there.
Uh according to the uh website this morning, we're at, I believe, five oh four, I just checked.
We're over.
So we're definitely over and uh we're averaging a uh increase of seven per day. So it's gonna, we're not seeing any relief, we're at five oh six today.
So Chief, later in the agenda, we do have a um an item that's gonna be dealing with um outdoor, the prohibition of outdoor uh burn. Uh basically our burn ban, is it your recommendation, anything over five hundred would be your recommendation to to have that prohibition in place?
Yes, ma'am, I recommend at this time that the court does uh move on that agenda item and place a burn ban in effect. And I would like to strongly urge that the Commissioner's Court also uh place a ban on aerial fireworks sales. I know it's not a popular decision, but we are very dry and meeting, uh we had a conference call with the uh National Weather Service on Monday and the only possible rain they're looking at is maybe the week of the Fourth of July, but at that point it'll be too late. Everything will be dead and dry. And uh we need to try to protect our citizens and our community from uh any other fires. And I think that's gonna be our best bet is to go ahead and place it, because if we don't do it by the fourteenth, we won't be able to.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate the recommendation and we'll take up that agenda item momentarily. Thank you. Um at this time, uh for the clerk, she's got three sets of minutes, twenty-fifth of May, twenty-sixth of May, twenty-seventh of May. Is there a motion to approve all three?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. I'll move on to the consent agenda and ask that items A through P, A through P be reviewed and I'd look for a motion at this time for their approval. If not, uh please designate those that need to be removed for some consent, a discussion.
Uh some moved, Lord.
All right, A through P, I'll second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. Uh regular agenda item is uh, let's see if he's online, he sure certainly is. Um a regular agenda item is three A one, receive the update from consultant Tim Richardson on Gomaesa and other federal funding opportunities.
Judge, I I'd like to ask.
Yes, do you have someone that needs to go in advance?
Well, I just I see Mike here, M I D, uh uh M H I D, I I see Bill with the Coastal Bend Wellness Foundation. If we can get them out, I mean, I I love Tim, but but Tim can wait, Tim's a consultant and he
Yeah.
he's been paid, so I'd like to make best use of the time that we have.
No worries, and you know what, they're next, Tim, would you yield to that? He will. Okay. He said yes, I see him online, it's just not audio. Thank you, Tim, uh you'll be right, you'll be following, so I'll advance uh Commissioner uh item three A two, receive a presentation regarding the development of a comprehensive collaborative behavioral mental health restoration program. Uh Commissioners, after we receive this this um presentation, there is an action item and that's to discuss and consider approving an order to transfer the county funds to certain county funds to a mental health account. Uh with us this morning is Dr. Xavier Gonzalez, our Behavioral Health Coordinator from Noises County. And as you mentioned, Commissioner, lots of good people in the audience here to offer resource and support, including Coastal Bend Wellness, CCPD, M H I D, and potentially others. Dr. Gonzalez, do you need Connie to tee up anything on the screen?
Yeah, she's gonna tee up, while she's doing that, uh let me, for those who don't know me and those that are out in Zoom, I am Dr. Xavier Gonzalez, I am Noises County's Director of Mental Health Programs. And so, yes, today we have uh many groups here, just to add add a couple. We have representation from the Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, we have representation from Amistad. And on on Zoom, we also have representation from Senate Corps, so we have strong representation today. Uh so to get us started, and I I think if you if you if you entertain me momentarily, just because uh a lot of emotions this morning with the students, having the bishop here. Uh you know, this week itself, I I've been, I was asked to for tomorrow to give a talk for a funeral. And so the I've been having on mind Saint Augustine. And in particular, uh the word hope, the hope has two sisters, anger and courage. And I guarantee, last week, I was given, I was asked to come and talk to a few groups, because they wanted to know what are we gonna do for mental health after everything that happened with kids? So I've 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 carried a, I've carried and felt a lot of anger this last couple of weeks. But now, let's move that to courage.
Judge? If I may interject for just a second.
Of course.
I believe this may be uh better held in executive session.
Okay.
This involves a an eleven fifteen waiver uh fund balance.
Can can he speak just to the, not the funding at all, but just to the presentation of what his program is? I can caution him?
I think that would be proper, but in discussion past that, I think ought to be an executive session.
I'm gonna agree. Dr. Gonzalez, if you would limit your discussion to the concepts, the organization, operation, please don't discuss funding at this time.
Okay.
And we'll have you back after executive session if needed, fair enough? Okay, thank you for the admonition.
Well, then if to reframe this then, uh I'll frame this around uh collaborative, building the collaborative, I'll frame it around uh on uh having, building um, I guess, building the infrastructure around this collaborative and frame it around uh next steps. And so, within that framework, the lens that I'm going to use today, as you see on the slide that's in front of you, behavioral health in the justice system. Uh a lot of discussion that, especially today with the the kids, they were talking. Um you know, we have a cha- one of our major challenges right now in the county is that our county jail is full. And we we have to come up with ways to address that. And one of the ways of addressing that also has to do with looking at behavioral health. Can we help individuals with behavioral health before they even go in? So as what you're seeing right now on the screen is what's referred to as a sequential intercept model. Uh this is a best practice model that's that's touted by uh several of the grant funders that are out there. Uh and and it's just that, it is intercepts of where there's entry points into the justice system, especially when it's in relation to behavioral health. Um and so that's where I I'm gonna frame, as I said, use that lens in describing the next few things. Just to give you some, to see there, you'll see that this intercept model is broken down from intercept zero, which is at first basis, uh first entry point, starting at at the community level. So what can we do there to really block in- entry into the justice system? It it skirts down further, moving towards initial detention, moving towards those that are already in jail and continuing on to once they're released, making sure that they don't return. And making sure that there's plenty of support systems out in the community uh to allow them to thrive. And so that's the model system that, you know, we're we're basing this palm because we we when anything that we that we create, it's gonna need sustainability and we have to think about uh if this is what's the best practices that's that's supported by grant funders and we want to, we want to fall within those best practices. So the next slide, please. So this next slide is more for for adding some context uh as far as uh how we're how we're gonna get to that, why we're we're pushing towards having this community collaborative and building that community collaborative. If you if you look at here, uh I I'm not gonna go into extreme detail on this, but basically this is just a organization, an organizational chart. It it's the uh I we, my department created this as a as a means to see uh what is our goal and what are the resources we that we have and and what do we follow the path that we're falling under? Uh first and foremost, we're we're here for the court. This department is a liaison for the court to uh help provide you with the best information that we that we can garner. And under what premise, the premise is making sure that there's access to care, access to health care. And mental health falls under health care, so that that's that's what we're trying to do. And and doing so, and doing so is making sure that that mental health care is provided to all those, even for those that can go into crisis who might end up moving towards that into those entry points in the sequential intercept model. Uh so this was a, so this was built, and you see that there's three uh kind of reddish boxes there. I'll start with the first one, partnership development and management. Um and I'm going right, right to left.
Yeah.
So partnership development management, I I I bring that because that was the first goal of this department this past year, is making sure that we do we develop uh relationships with all those here in Noises County first that haven't, that uh interact when it comes to behavioral health and interact with those who might end up in the justice system, so that therefore, working with every stakeholder when it comes to behavioral health service provided to clients, working with also our general healthcare providers, working with uh with uh definitely with law enforcement and and I I give, I really like to give thanks to CCPD and the Sheriff's Office for being here and supporting us as well, because they are definitely a a strong component of what we're trying to do. Uh and then judicial system, making sure that we talk to our D U A, making sure that we talk to everyone that invol- that involved that can help with individuals is in getting them into the right appropriate place and getting them into appropriate treatments. But definitely we don't want to leave behind, making sure that we let the state know that we're doing, so talking to different agencies and keeping them informed. Uh because we do want to have that sustainability and also looking at a national level, because we want to do those best practices and we want to be able to make sure that uh what we do does get recognized. Um so moving to the left, jail diversion initiative expansion. I said, these are, these are items that were, that were inherited for the the during the creation of this department. This department's been around for exactly one year. Uh the uh, there were already some, some, some factors in place to try to help us when it comes to to diverting individuals from going into our jail and perhaps even those that were in the jail to help them uh be uh put under some type of treatment by being, once they're let out. And uh those programs right there, you're you're, I'm just gonna uh name them quickly, you see the Assertive Community Treatment Act, that uh that highlights there, treating people in the community, doing that, going to them, making sure that they have care. Forensic Act is just, it's a, it's a version of that, but focusing on those individuals that were released from jail. Uh having a walk-in crisis clinic, having a place for individuals who are in crisis, they can just go into without having that crisis go expand upon and and them ending up in ER or some type of inpatient facility. Mobile crisis, making sure that there's teams of individuals that if they're called upon, they can go to that individual and provide them with care. Uh another being P A R I, P A R I is the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. This contract was, it's a little, it's a little bit different actually from jail diversion, because that P A R I's mission is not jail diversion. P A R I's mission is working with officers and community behavioral health uh stakeholders to provide help with individuals without even the idea of arrest. Next, crisis intervention team expansions. So the the creation of crisis intervention teams, expanding upon the service they can provide, making sure that we cover time uh throughout their twenty-four hour period. The goal was to get to that. Part of reaching that goal, Cloud Nine Telehealth. I- implementation of a of a telehealth platform that would allow for officers to be able to have at their, at do a digital resource, have a counselor or clinician or a mental health um professional available to them to guide them in working with an individual they come upon that might be have in a crisis. And then having competency restoration, for those that are in the jail that were deemed incompetent, making sure that that there that we can get those individuals uh uh moved out and get them to the uh have their day in court so they can get to the the care that they need. These are the things that had had already been in place and these are the things that have been uh well, most mostly had been in place or had been in process of being put in place. Um but we had a framework and this is the framework that we're working on, but we're still struggling, our jail's still full. So we we still need to work towards something to in keep improving that. Uh so the last thing I want to highlight there is the Meadows' recommendations. Uh that was, that was by, that was an initiative by y'all in the court to see, to have the Meadows Institute, which is institute that is nationally alone, it's an institute that it's that works closely, if you don't know the HOG Foundation, the HOG Foundation's out of the University of Texas. Uh they're basically the one that write the manual as far as how we deal with behavioral health here in Texas. Um so they're strongly supported. And in 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 they did highlight four key key portions there and we have moved forward on implementing their recommendations. But of all their recommendations, I'm gonna highlight two main things. Um if you look at that Meadows' report and you review the word collaborative, collaborative is mentioned fifty-seven times. They strongly want us to build collaboratives. And when they're talking about collaboratives, they're talking about collaboratives between stakeholders who directly provide that behavioral health service. The next word is integrative care, that's mentioned a hundred and seven times. What they're wanting us to do is make sure that we we keep in mind that health is also mental health. And that we integrate professionals from various aspects of of the health field to make sure that individuals have the care that they need. Uh in this case for us, they 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 did have it under the lens as well that we're, they were currently speaking about, the justice system. Making sure that individuals do not end up in the justice system. So that was year one. Now, where do we move to the future, if you move to the next slide, please? So that means, you know, speaking, and I'm gonna go direct directly to the center box, listed as collaborative special projects. There's been a lot of discussions of having a jail diversion center. Uh and talking about model systems, there's model systems in Harris County, there's model systems in Bear County, both those counties, if you, anywhere you go in the nation, they're recognized. Um Harris does ca- cause theirs, the the Ed Emmett uh Diversion Center. Bear County caused theirs the Restoration Center. I like the term restoration because in the end, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to restore the health of our, the individuals in our community. And so the the focal point there is how do we, how can we um build capacity to get us to a restoration center? These communities, it took, this took them, Houston, it took them twenty years, Bear County, they've been trying to do, they it took, they start that, their role back in two thousand and seven, I believe, to get to that point of having this all encompassing place. So it takes some time, it takes some time to build some capacity, but we have a head start because we have some playbooks and we have some organizations that are all here in the room, who have been working hard uh to try to provide the best service they can for for the the large group of individuals here in our community that need that help. Um and so, in building that collaborative, we're gonna build it, the the what I wanted to discuss is how, you know, building a community collaborative for what? We wanna co- we wanna community collaborative to get us to that restoration center, to get us to where we have crisis, a crisis care center as part of that, to get us where we have a sobering detox center as part of that, to get us where we have integration of of care from adults involved with all of this, to get us to where we have interaction with uh and address some of the needs of our homeless population who also fall under this mental health and substance use disorder area. Um those are the key. We have other collaboratives go, we have other projects that would, that would benefit from this type of center. Uh projects definitely with our rural, in our rural areas, projects definitely with our veteran services. We have some collaboratives with, still with P A R I. And with, there's been some discussions on creating a specialized community health workers who who would be lay health uh behavioral health workers as well and having these specialized mental health officers. So those have things that have been mentioned and all these are components that would work and strengthen the us getting those components towards a restoration center. So we're gonna move to the next slide. So as I mentioned to y'all, if we start from the left, you see the the collaborative special projects again. That the first goal here was to to build a a community collaborative to where we can have the minds that know that what we need to get done to work to to get that restoration cons- uh center built, to get us to capacity for there. So if you allow me again, just to highlight these these different groups, to to my right, I have M H I D.
And if you would just allow me real quick, like, we have these new rules and so what I want to do is just very quickly, uh Commissioners, this is too important of a presentation, I would like your blessing to go beyond the I would like your blessing to go beyond the ten minutes that we allot. Um, I've got a nod here, a nod here.
I don't mind.
Okay, please continue. I've got three nods, um, in the room.
How much time you need?
Okay.
Pl- please continue. I just, I'm mindful that, uh, in order to be the presiding officer, I just need to check with everybody. Please continue.
Thank you.
Apologize.
Thank you, Judge, and, and I will be more succinct as I continue.
No, no, you're doing great, just.
Um,
Good job.
As I mentioned, to my right, I have M H I D. Uh, who have been thoroughly, thoroughly working when it comes to crisis care. Uh, but we have other community partners who are moving, who have been strongly moving to behavioral health area, who have been integrating care as well, and not to say that they haven't, because as, I think we just had a talk, a presentation by M H I D that they are now a certified community behavioral health organization. What that means, that's part of, that's part of it. Having community collaboratives, having that integrated care. To my left, I have the account, the Coast of Well Wellness Foundation here, here with me. Down the row, I ha- I have Ruben Ber- Ruben Bernal, who's representing the Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. In front of me, I have Dr. Baggerman, who's representing, um, Amistad. And as I said, we have Senecor on Zoom, and I have Crystal Aguilar there, who's, who's representing there. But not to forget again, we have here, um, behind me, I have Chief Deputy Cook in particular, because he, he, he's trying to figure out what, what can we do for our jail. Uh, and in speak, mentioning him, I have Debbie Dunaiznail here, who, whose focal point is jail diversion. So how do we make sure that the individuals that perhaps could have better help outside the jail with, or, or help with behavioral health services, get that help they need? Uh, and of course, I have, uh, uh, Chief Shower here with us, who's been a strong proponent of making sure that we, we, to, we make sure that we look at where all the gaps are at, and we start addressing those gaps. And, and, uh, not to forget, most importantly too, for me, because we have constant discussions with Officer Barnes there, because Officer Barnes is in the field, he's the one that sees them immediately when they're in crisis. He's the one that's there trying to calm the situation, and he has done some amazing things. So we have this group here. Everyone that's listed there, everyone that can make decisions is, is here today. Um, the go- the goal is to bring everybody together as far, as far as having a discussion. What, you know, and, and not to go into financials, but what discussion is this? How can we build capacity for a restoration center? Each of these groups has, has presented at some point an idea or components of ideas for me, and how can we do that? How can we make this a comprehensive program? How can we make sure that everyone gets help, uh, first and foremost? And so where those fall, at, at least going back to the, the, the sequential intercept model and entry points. Crisis care, sobering, integrated care, transitional recovery housing, these are all things that have been proposed. These are all things that fall under intercept, zero intercept one, early on. Um, so where did, what, you know, you, you, you look at this, well, you know, there's a lot of other intercepts there. Why are we hea- what, why are we focusing heavily on a re- on a restoration center that is only on these first points? If you go to the next, next slide, please. It's about best practices. If you look at this, this funnel there, this funnel is just a way of, another representation of the intercept model. I have the intercept model on the right of that too, just to keep you in correlation of what that is. You see that that's the biggest net. That's where the most in- individuals come, and if we look at it, if we look at it from, from metaphors, we look at, we can look at it as a, a river of individuals that are filling this cup. We need to address that, that are coming in from the very beginning. And so that's what that would do for us. It would put that, it would stop that pressures if, of people entering into our jail. Yes, we would still need to see how to get, relieve some pressure from within, and we have some components of that that, that will be, that will be mentioned in the subsequent slide, but that's where the focus of a restoration center lies. All those components when it comes to crisis care, to sobering, to detox, to integrated care, to having a community collaborative, all of this will fix, will address that initial zero-one intercept. Uh, and so that's that goal, to, to build this community collaborative and to work with the commissioners to see if, if you can allow these individuals, if they're, if they're, you know, if, if there's funding available, not to be, be specific about it, but if there's anything available, and there's something that the court can assist with. The suggestion would be to allow these individuals to come to the table and come up with a comprehensive plan on the ideas that have been proposed, and how to best utilize fun, any funding that might be available for infrastructure, to get us to the, those components of a restoration center. So, if you allow me for the next slide. These are, as I said, just been ideas that have been appro- uh, po- uh, proposed. Uh, everyone that was mentioned have, would be part of the, would be part of this. As I said, uh, M H I D, they have a building there, they've had some planning on, on how to create that, how to create that as a crisis center, uh, trying to make it com- uh, comprehensive, because that's the goal, the initial goal. How do we make this completely comprehensive? Um, and even though on the right, we see that there's sobering detox, and that there wasn't, it is suggested there at the crisis center, we could have some sobering detox. I mentioned the word gaps. On the right is the Wilson Plaza, if you don't know what that building is, where it says sobering detox. The Wilson Plaza is where we have our city detention center, another one of those first entry points in the justice system. Um, and the reason I mention that as a gap, I'm gonna mention another, I, I'm gonna mention a number, and if I'm incorrect, we have Chief Shower here can correct me on that. But, I'm all about the individual. I was made aware of an individual that's been through that CDC just this year, over sixty times. Over sixty times, and just in one day, that individual got picked up twice. They, they went through the typical process. They got brought in, they got processed, they sobered up, they got magistrate, and they got let out, and they went straight back to the street, without anybody there at that door to say, can we help you? Can we direct you to services? That's a gap. So the goal though, what, can we, how do we address that gap? Well, we put somebody there. It sounds like a quick fix. Well, that means we need some infrastructure, and we have people there twenty-four hours, and, you know, the goal be then, that's why we, there, the idea of having something, a sobering detox there, because it just makes sense. If the individuals are brought there for public intoxication, uh, for other smaller crimes, we have something there to address them immediately. We got some smart minds here. We can come to, we can figure out a way to how to get people to the, the most appropriate place where they need to be. But, in moving forward from now, we also need to know that those that, that don't quite qualify to go through this other option of option, of door number two, perhaps pre-arrest, just because of the, the, the typical level crime, if they're still magistrate it out and allowed to be let out, they still need help. They still need someone there to address that need. Now, if someone needs continued, uh, treatment, because you don't want to just send them back out. Senecor was, was proposing having this, uh, transitional recovery housing, expanding that housing units, making more spaces available. Making more spaces available also for, for our veterans, as I said. There's a lot of other components there that come into play here. Uh, this would be part of that restoration center. These are all the, 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 the infrastructure needed. But we can't stop there, because we do still have individuals, and I'm gonna name another individual. An individual that was in, and, uh, Chief Deputy Cook can correct me on this too. There was an individual that was brought to my attention that was there for over five hundred days. Five hundred days needing, uh, medical care, roughly nearly a hundred thousand dollars for that individual. The individual was released. Two months later, they returned. That's why I'm also proposing that we, if we're thinking about infrastructure and thinking about how we can add some funding towards infrastructure, we also think about a reentry center. There's reentry centers that they have in, in Harris County, there's even reentry centers they have in Bear County. It's all part of it. Um, I've had some discussions about where, where, you know, where we could be. A lot of these individuals, they're gonna need crisis, they're gonna need, uh, behavioral health services, they're gonna need crisis services. Um, but of course, there's a lot of further collaborations that we'll need there, workforce collaborations. But we, we've had those, those discussions have already been made with workforce collaborations. Having collaborations for, um, getting in- individuals to be ready to, to be part of the workforce. So that, that's all there, but I, I think of reentry too, because it was recently brought to my attention that a need for this, not just with adults, but also with our youth. Um, from the juvenile justice center.
Judge, can I ask a question real quick?
Of course.
Just, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, sir. I said, of course.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. I apologize. Could, I'm just trying to, can, what is exactly the asks today on this? Because it says improving an order, transferring county funds to a mental health account. What is the ask today of this court?
Uh, hold on, Dr. Gonzalez. Uh, county attorney's gonna address that with you right now.
Yeah, Com- Commissioner Chesney, I think that, uh, the discussion of, the presentation is fine. I think that's proper. But any discussion of this needs to be held in executive session.
A funding ask?
Yes, I think, uh, well, he can do his presentation, but as far as any discussion of that, that needs to be in the executive session.
Oh, okay. So will we be getting there a- at some point soon on this? Because obviously, there's an ask, and I've read the presentation, and it's very good, but I'm just trying to figure out how we get to the point where we either make some action on this or, or, or don't, so that we can let these fine people know what we're doing.
I agree. Um, I can tell you that, um, it's ten thirty-five this morning. Um, as you see in front of you, we have a very long agenda before we get to executive session. If you're interested in getting to executive session, let's say around noon or a time, I'd be happy to have that as a motion. Um, I just, you know, I, I feel like we're being advised to go to executive, and as you know, we have people in the courtroom here to make other presentations, but I'm happy to do that at, at. Would that be amenable to you?
Uh, Judge, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going, so.
Yeah.
No, and I'm not trying to circumvent your meeting order in any way, shape or form, so.
How, how about, I think, I, I feel like it's fair to announce noon, and that we'll do that at executive session. Is that, is that good with everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I think that'll help them a little bit.
And then how much longer on the presentation?
Probably about two minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
So, mentioning that final thing, and to try to, to use the appropriate language without stepping on the, the financial portion of it. The goal here is that we have projects here that are, that are potential to get us to a restoration center. Um, there needs, there needs to be some infrastructure funding for it. Uh, I, I, as you see here, building a collaborative, that's what I'm asking. Building that collaborative, bringing these individuals that are currently in the room, allow, if, if there is any funding available to, for this infrastructure, that you allot these individuals to come together and determine where that, what would be the best, uh, process for that. And, uh, but what you're doing in, in doing that, you're allowing them to work with their strengths, you're allowing them to, to leverage the resources they currently have to make a decision on what, whatever funding's available, whatever amounts available, on how they can best address these infrastructure programs, and that we can start getting us towards that restoration center. So that in the end is all I have to say.
Great presentation, great slides. Of course, the last slide is the best slide, because it gets to the crux of the matter. I just have one follow-up question. It's not meant to be long, it's just meant to create awareness for our audience as well as the court. You're an expert, that's why these models, uh, have been vetted by you, right? And also, your deputy, um, has actual experience with the restoration center in Bear County. So we're not, you're not proposing something that we would not bring expertise at from the Nuysis County perspective?
No, no, and from this, I said, this, this stems from what's in the Meadows' report, this stem, as I said. And you men- you mentioned my deputy director, yes, my deputy director was one of those original individuals who was there in the formation of the Restoration Center for Bear County. So there's plenty of knowledge behind this.
Lay that predicate. Okay, in that case, I'm gonna ask you to hold. Um, as you've heard, we need to address this at a different time. I'm gonna call for noon so that we can see how fast we can get through some other important agenda items that people are waiting on. I hope that your time does allow for it, um, unless there are any questions for him at this point. I know you'll make yourself available. Okay, thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Thank you so much. At this time, I'll move back to A1. Tim Richardson, if you would unmute and tell us a little bit about Gomesa and the other funding, federally funded opportunities. And he may not know, okay, Tim, you may not know this, but we gotta unmute you.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you, Judge, and.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I have my stopwatch on, and I'm gonna stay within five minutes.
Wonderful.
This is a mid-year report.
Can you get his volume?
Have a copy of what I'm gonna say, but I wanna repeat some of it, um, and offer you a chance to, uh, ask questions at the end. So number one, uh, Scott Cross and Coastal Parks has received, uh, the order to proceed to execute their contract on seven point five million dollars for, uh, Padre Bali and I B McGee. As you know, you've been waiting a long time, uh, four and a half years, uh, to, from the December twenty seventeen decision to award you. Uh, inflation by itself has, has hit, uh, a million dollars more that you'll have to pay. Uh, in March, uh, three point six million was given to, um, Packery Channel Living Shoreline from G L O. Um, also, the Texas TIG, uh, gave, uh, four point seven million to Petronia Creek. It's a big win for Petronia Creek to get number one in the state for freshwater inflows.
Tim, can you, can you, when you're going through this, because some of this is repeat to the court, especially the Scott Cross stuff, can you talk about what you've worked on? And not just the stuff that you put in here for Scott, what your role in it was, and how you, and what you did on these projects, if you did stuff on them, or if you didn't, then please indicate that as well.
Okay, well, Scott's is the only one I didn't work on, because that predated me. Everything else, including twenty-three million dollars worth of projects, uh, I have been involved in. And the image you should have in mind is a rugby scrum, where you have like ten, twelve, fifteen bodies pushing. Somebody moves their leg in one direction, something else happens somewhere else. Uh, so we have gotten four point seven million from the Texas TIG, five million from C M P for the Bob Hall Pier Sky Bridge and, uh, the parking lot.
Wait, 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 hold on. No. You, did you work? Nobody's told us that we've gotten the grant given to us from the.
It's not, not confirmed.
Scott was told by, by, uh, G L O.
No, Scott was told to apply for it, but no one, we have not been awarded that grant, correct?
Well, he got verbal on that.
He got verbal, they've got it?
So did you work on that?
I did.
Okay. Okay, so the verbal, I understand it got was, apply, and there's a good chance you're gonna get it.
Yeah, let's, let's not go into.
It's behind, yeah.
Let's, if we're not, we don't have the official award, let's don't talk about it like we've gotten it, because then that's gonna be on the news tomorrow. So if we have gotten it, then we need, someone needs to say we've gotten it. If we haven't gotten it yet officially, then we haven't gotten it.
We have not gotten it.
Okay.
Scott is here, you wanna say something?
One thing you have gotten is a commitment from the Edward Shaw Foundation for one point six million for Breakwater Project. Uh, they're also, the Palacios Marine Agricultural Research, um, uh, organization is committing eight million for the Living Shoreline. Um, uh, in terms of oyster, uh, development, that's gonna go into precinct one up there off North Beach. Um, in addition to the four point seven million, uh, for Petronia Creek from the Texas TIG, they've got fifteen million behind that. You don't have that yet, but you won the Derby in terms of getting first place and where it would likely go. Um, we're waiting on twenty-one million dollars from T C E Q for their bucket two water quality program. Um, and that can come any day. We're waiting on Treasury to click that, and where those dollars fall out, I can't predict exactly, but I think Petronia Creek is going to be, uh, definitely uh, in the running for that, strong. Um, the, uh, this year and next year, a total of two hundred and eighty million dollars will be available from all Restore Buckets, Nerdah, and the Texas Gomesa. So it's a really important and exciting time. You had your past, uh, something I did work on is your, your, uh, Texas Water Development Board, uh, grant of two point seven million, bringing in Clayberg and Jim Wells County, uh, to have a plan. I heard in the public comment that people. I heard in the public comment that people are frustrated with planning and permitting, and I am too. But really, you cannot land dollars from any of these grant sources without a plan. And you, the second of the public meetings was held in Robstown by Susan Roth and the whole group. And it's, and it's exciting opportunity. Get your plan in place for this $280 million that is approaching you and all the entire coast. Your plan will be in place. I've hit my five minutes. I've got a lot more to say, but among the partners that you have actively helping you right now is the General Land Office, the Texas TIG, the Chapman Ranch, TCEQ and Treasury, the Ed Rochelle Foundation, P Mar, Palacios Marine Agricultural Research, the City of Corpus Christi, the Port of Corpus Christi Authority, First Lady Barbara Bush through the Texas, Texan by Nature Program in Baffin Bay. They've come out with an exciting new video. Texas Water Development Board has addressed that, the two counties, they're your partners, Clayburg and Jim Wells. Possibly CDBG MIT, we're hoping for the Living Shoreline. In terms of, then also Congressman Cloud on Sea Turtles is getting interested in doing something along with Congressman Cuellar and Congressman Gonzalez. In terms of media, you'll have a CBS Sunday Morning Sea Turtle program coming up. The PBS program that you participated in will be here June 30th. Depends on which stations want to run it. It's their decision. And Scott tells me that the Eplamado Falcon video is going to be released shortly. So that is a, a big body of work. I would say that, that in terms of what you have in the offing is about $36 million. And Commissioner Chesney, you've been in the lead in precinct four of these dollars so far. I think precinct one, precinct two, and precinct three are going to catch up this year in the second half of the year. So that's good for them. And good for you as well because the water quality will go into the bank.
I have a question. So between last September and, and now, have we received any monies at all?
Yeah. 4.7 from Texas TIG.
4.7, Texas?
4.7 million.
Okay.
4.7 from Texas TIG.
And that went where?
Pardon me?
And that went where?
That's going to Petronia Creek.
Petronia Creek.
Which will include your precinct.
Was there, was there a, a proposals or something submitted for Petronia Creek?
Yes, that has been, a lot of proposals by you and Clayburg and Jim Wells County.
I don't remember that proposal or something. Can you give me a copy of that proposal?
Sure.
I would appreciate it.
Ed Rochelle Foundation, 1.6, which is part of the Living Shoreline that's in precinct one. They're using old highway cement they're going to put in the water to build your underwater breakwater. Hopefully, it will become the home for 5 billion oysters.
And the 1.6 is for Noises County to do that?
Pardon me?
The 1.6 is for Noises County to do that?
It's for your project, yes. By the Ed Rochelle Foundation.
What project? What project is that?
It's stuff, not money, Commissioner. It's, it's material.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about money. Is there any monies for Noises County that we can use that we gotten from September to now?
4.7 million has been directed to Petronia Creek.
And with those monies, we already have those monies?
You know, probably you don't have a check, but you're, you're been awarded.
When was the award?
Pardon?
When was, when was the award?
It was in March.
Do you have a copy of that award or something?
Yes, it's been published. I'll get it to you.
Would you please? I appreciate it. And also, I've got to get a copy of the proposal, so.
A copy of the proposal?
Yeah. And also, the 1.6 Ed Rochelle is really for material or something they're going to do, use there at precinct one?
Correct.
Yeah.
But we're not doing, are we doing the work, Noises County doing the work?
They will contract to get the work in and that, part of that figure, the 1.67 million is the cement itself and moving the cement off North Beach.
And we have, and we have the contract for that?
No, Commissioner, we have the National Wildlife Foundation grant pending for that project right now that the court has approved and we've submitted.
Yeah, because just when he says precinct one, precinct two, it just kind of throws me off, you know.
Precinct one, it would be technically, it would be technically, yeah. Not really, you're right. It's not in the precinct, but it protects the precinct, number one. But you're right. It's not, it's in the water, so it's technically not, but it's right there.
Yeah.
As close as it can be.
Okay, so, okay, so only the 4.7 has, has been awarded or supposed to be awarded. Okay. All right, I don't know anything else, but if there's nothing else, then I guess, right?
The 15, Tim, you might talk about the 15 million behind the 4.7 million.
Yeah, that is the rest of the non-point source water pollution funding is 15 million that is on the shelf. They're awaiting a, engineering and design on the Chapman Ranch freshwater inflow project. But you're in the lead on that, so that's where you want to be. We'd all, everyone is frustrated that the construction dollars have not gone faster.
So those 15 million will go where?
It'll go to the Petronia Creek process, project, in the Chapman Ranch.
Yes.
Is that us?
It's, it, it's us in that we're intricately a part of it since the creek is in Noises, but it also includes Clayburg because it drains to Baffin Bay.
So Clayburg will be actually in charge of doing?
Well, it's actually remains to be seen who's going to be actually in charge of the work. The TIG, the, the trustee implementation group.
Can you give me a copy? Can you give me a copy of that also, the 15 million?
Sure.
And then, I guess, do you want to mention the, the money that we just received from the GLO, the Packery Channel grant?
Yeah, 3.6 million for Packery Channel.
That goes to Coastal Parks?
Correct.
That goes to Coastal Parks?
Yes, precinct four.
This, Commissioner Hernandez, let me ask you a question, please. Does any of these monies go towards Driscoll? I just, we got a district that came into my area and I'd just like to find out a little bit more, see where we're at.
Yeah, I think the future money, the water, Driscoll should be definitely in line for the Bucket Two, Restore Bucket Two, which is the Water Quality, Water Quantique Grant. It's going, going to be going, I believe, hopefully in your district.
Hopefully.
In your precinct.
Yeah. Is there anything for Banquette area or I was?
Yes. In fact, you know, at the Water Development Board meeting that I attended in Robstown, the Noises River Authority has $140 million wish list in your region, not just your precinct, but the entire Noises River Authority. And one of the things that has worked other places in the Texas coast, on the Texas coast, is that when you can map your goals with the state agency goals and the Oasis River Authority is a state agent, state funded agency, you have a better chance to win. If you have a plan, if you can match up with state and federal priorities, you're going to win. That's what Jefferson County has done. 100% of their goals match with state and federal agencies. So the Noises River Authority, Commissioner Hernandez, is really important. Their success is important for your success.
Would they try, would that tri-county study help us at all in that?
That's, that's what I call the landing strip for these dollars. And you can't go into Austin or Washington without a plan and expect to get money unless you're expecting charity. It does happen, but you really have to be.
I'm not expecting charity, but I was just wondering if by having that tri-county study, that's going to help us at all to?
It's, it's paramount to the success of, of that water plant and that, those areas in your precinct.
Thank you.
And I think what, Susan is going to be up later, but I believe that that plan is going to be draft final this time next year.
You know, thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Commissioner. Commissioner, am I, did you guys think?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I just, you know, I'm going to go back to what you said earlier about studies, right? Because you heard a lot of complaints about studies and you said something in the beginning. Well, if you don't do studies, then you don't get monies, right?
Correct.
That's what you said at the beginning, and so I think, and I, and I think you're right. And that's, you know, you're absolutely right, and that's why some people don't understand about studies, right? We don't like studies. We don't like, because you don't get no infrastructure funds. You just get study funds. So, but again, the ones that were here complaining, some, they don't understand those. They haven't, you know, we, you know, the thing is, somebody, we tell them all the time that it's a study. You know, I mean, it's a study. So in the River Authority, to me, it's another study that I, I'm just really tired of studies too, like, like the people are, right? So I don't know, and, and they're from UALD, so I'm not going to, I'm not, I don't think we should invest any kind of monies on studies that are really not from Noises County. But that's, that's me, right? So, but anyway, I just wanted to let you know, and I'm glad you said that about the studies because we've heard that today several times.
Yes, and I, I heard in the public comment and people are going up the wall and I can understand that. So just very quickly, the big picture, we are halfway through the BP Deepwater Horizon funding. The game clock is at halftime. They, Texas has spent $630 million. There is an estimated 1.2 billion left in the second half. So one-third of the money is gone, two-thirds of the money is straight ahead. Your plans are getting in, in place. You're starting to get more dollars. You're starting to get what the old ramming speed, if you go back to the Ben Hur movie, from our youth. You're getting to ramming speed, and that's a good thing. You're getting a lot of partners and once the state sees their success as your success or vice versa, your success is their success, you're going to be a lot further down the road than being on the outside playing peekaboo with wondering where things are going to happen. So the closer we can map to that Noises River Authority, you're now pitching for state dollars, to, for a state agency, so they can fund themselves. And that's not a criticism of them, but they like to do that.
But we've got to fund ourselves too, though. We've got a lot of stuff we've got to fund here, you know? And we just made some commitments, then we're going to try to get, we're going to try to do something with the drainage. So that's going to be, there's going to be a lot of funding there that we need to, we need to find. So, you know, and I really do that than having to do another study, so.
Commissioner, just to have Tim finish the list. You, Tim, will you just quickly tell Commissioner also, because he wants to know what monies, what monies have I come in? We also just got our GOMESA monies and that was actually noticed on the agenda. So will you just remind him about those two?
Yeah, I think it was $700,000, $700,000 in GOMESA. I didn't cause that. But as you know, Judge, we're constantly working with the National Association of Counties to protect GOMESA. And both the Obama and Trump administration tried to eliminate GOMESA. We stopped that at NACO. We helped stop it. And the, that's going to be for the state over 50 million a year, which they have 100% discretion to spend it anywhere they want on the coast. So 50 million a year, this year was 55 million. Offshore leasing, Judge, as I know you're going to be weighing in with the Gulf States Caucus on restarting the leasing for OCS drilling. And you're meeting on, with EPA next week and you'll be meeting in Washington and at, in Denver at the National Association of Counties. We've got to have that. Everyone knows that Ukraine and war has, has greatly impacted oil, oil prices and oil reliability, energy reliability. So that's a battle we have to win. Is to get leasing going in the Gulf, but I'll tell you what, with the prices that are going on today, you can handle what you've lost on the leasing interruption, I believe, in, in next year. You're going to be pretty close to what you've always been and the state will be at the $50 million range. Commissioner sit down in January with a brand-new Texas Coastal Resiliency Master Plan. And finally, June 29th, I would like the entire Commissioners' Court to attend the Technical Advisory Committee of the General Land Office. They're going to be asking you what you want. The next Commissioner will decide if you get it. But right now, on the, on the, that plan, the 2019 version of that plan, doesn't have water in it, your top three. We have to get water to be in your top three. I'd say number one. Most of Texas' approach has been outward focused on the Gulf protecting beaches and shorelines and wetlands. We need to get inward focused on the water reaching the Gulf from the land. And that's a big, and that's starting to happen. That's, and, and when that Texas Water Development Board plan is done and that, if you had a chance to hear Kathleen Jackson, Chairman of the Board, it's gun, it's coming. You're on first.
Thank you, Tim. Are there any other questions?
I've got one last question, Judge.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I, this morning, we gave authorization to our manage, manage, our emergency management person. Our emergency management person? We, we just authorized him to look into the drainage. Is there anything that'll tell us or for, keep us from going into other, you know, how I have my precinct, I can only do my precinct and for, further on down the line, like a boundaries? Go into Robstown area and go do their area. Can we do that without upsetting Robstown or anybody else? I mean, I want to help people as much as anybody else and I'm willing to do that, but I just want to know if we're doing it legally.
I think, are you asking, is it, are you in a competition with other precincts or not really?
No, we're not in competition. We'd all be heading the same direction, seems like, doing the same thing. I just want to know, some of those boundaries would be like going into Robstown's area. Some of them may be state area, text dot, and I just want to know if we're okay doing that.
Yeah, we're seeking, on your behalf, you're seeking in the neighborhood of $150 million for the backside of the county, the inland side. And when you get that, you're going to, each of those issues and places you mentioned are going to be addressed.
They have to be addressed, but you've got to get their approval.
So I think we can work on this from, from the county attorney's perspective. But if it's in Noises County, you can work in Noises County. It's just a matter of creating interlocals with government entities if monies are going to be expended inside their jurisdictions and you're going to ask for their assistance or. But I, I think maybe the question is better asked this way. It depends what bucket of money we're dealing with. For example, GOMESA, Scott, you could address this maybe later in your presentation, but GOMESA actually has a regional map that that, those monies have to stay in that regional geographic map. So maybe it would be helpful to you if we could get that regional map to the county manager. I got the thumbs up here. That helps you understand where those monies can be spent only inside that regional area, geographic area. But that's just those monies. Take Petronilla Creek, those monies are coming from a different bucket of money and in that's the BP Deepwater Horizon dollars. Petronilla Creek moves all the way to Baffin Bay. So those monies are going to be benefiting multiple jurisdictions, right? So I guess it just depends, but why don't, why don't we ask Tim to work with Scott to give you a little bit of ge? He's asking Scott and Tim about geographic boundaries and how you can use dollars to help water quality projects, drainage projects, living shoreline projects, and which ones are restricted and which ones aren't. I think that's what he's asking.
It's real easy to.
That's what I'm asking.
That's what he's asking.
The coastal zone as established by the Texas General Land Office is where they're going to focus, the state is going to focus most of their. The coastal zone, as established by the Texas General Land Office, is where they're going to focus, the state is going to focus most of their Gomesa monies. That all Gomesa has to stay within the established coastal zone as established by the state. It's real easy. You can go to their website and look it up, but I'll get a copy and I'll email all y'all individually. And, and then on the BP monies, you could go 25 miles inland past the coastal zone that's established with all the states participating in the BP stuff. So there's, there's some ways to get a little further out, outside of 25, but the standing rule is 25 miles inland past the coastal zone.
Past the coastal zone. So that's what we need to show you. And, but again, if it gives you any indicators, Petronilla Creek is in, okay? So that gives you a sense of, of where we are. But at any rate, Tim, thank you.
One clarification on, on that. Gomesa is allowable on the backside of the county. The CMP dollars, the much smaller coastal master plan dollars are tight to precinct four. But Gomesa, and I've asked Julie McIntyre a direct question when it came to the drainage in Jefferson County. We can go a county up because that's where the water flooding is derived from. So Gomesa, the most liberal dollars that you have in terms of jurisdiction, being able to move, they're, they're the biggest fund, and they can go to your inland drainage issues.
State Gomesa.
Yeah.
State Gomesa, yeah. And so, okay, thank you, Tim. In the interest of time, we're going to move on. This was presentation only. But thank you for the good presentation. And of course, some of the Commissioners ask you for, for documents, so be sure and get that. And even schedule a call with them, because that TIG is not necessarily the easiest thing to, to comprehend. And we've been working on that for quite a, quite a long time, so. But you're selling yourself short, man. You are the reason that we have such a huge presence in NACO with Gomesa. It's always important to tell the, I know you're being humble here, but Commissioner Chesney asked a smart question, and that is, you know, what have you done? And the answer is, you're leading the troops on the national level, getting us in front of everybody that will listen, that we need to continue Gomesa because the state counts on it, precinct four counts on it, Coastal Parks counts on it. And this water quality inland is absolutely critical for us. So it, it's huge. And if that was the only, you've done 10 other things, but if that was the only thing you've done, it would have been well worth it. So let's hope that we can keep Gomesa and its new sister, the RISE Act. And maybe on your next presentation, you can tell everybody how we're not just sitting and waiting for money coming in the mailbox. We're looking for new monies, and you've been on the leading edge of the RISE Act, which is critical as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judge, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. I learned a few things today.
All right, I'm going to move on to item number three. It's a discuss and consider on MOU with Coastal Bend Wellness and Noises County Public Libraries. It's my understanding everything's in order here, but I'll ask for the, okay? I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I kind of got head nods from you, but we're all good to go on this. Is that correct?
No, I think so.
Yeah, okay. Moving on to the office lease agreement between Noises County and LYB. This is a continued housing, kind of a yearly situation here with CSCD, our adult probation. I believe everything's in order here. Is there a motion to approve this lease agreement?
I'll move.
And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The next one is a supplemental agreement. It's a no-cost time extension for LAN relating to Bob Hall parking lot. You just heard from, quickly from Scott and Tim, that we've applied for a grant. So we're on a holding pattern, which means we need a no-cost time extension.
As long as there's no cost.
It's no cost, just time. All right, a second? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The next one is, and I wish Scott had come in for this, but there's a dune protection permit exemption, single-family residence. Lot four on Mustang Island, he'll tell you that this gets three different layers of vetting before you get it, Commissioners. It's been seen by Coastal Parks, by BMAC. It's been reviewed thoroughly. And so it comes to you now for, for your approval. Is there a approval of this particular permit exemption for this single-family residence? Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Is second?
And Judge.
Yes.
Connie can get, I see Commissioner Chesney's.
Commissioner Chesney has his hand up. Thank you. No, he's trying to join. Yeah, he's having some weak internet signal. Tomas, would you see if Scott Cross is out there? He really should come in and recommend approval for this before I call the vote. Yeah, I'll second it, Emma, but let's, let's get him to get it on the record that he, you know, that he's vetted it as, as, as the paperwork indicates.
And Judge, just, you know, just to fill, oh, there he is.
Hey, the dune permit?
Yeah, it's good to go.
Thank you. Just needed your recommendation on the record, please. You recommend approval?
Yeah, this is not working.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, Commissioner?
No, I was just going to say, I know these have had issues on them in the past, but the fact is that it's vetted so much by the state, by our local BMAC, and it gets us, it's kind of, hate to say minister, but it is really, it's just kind of, just, we're supporting.
By the time Megan gets done, I can assure you, everything has been checked and clarified.
Okay, fine. The next one is discuss and consider the approval, work authorization number two with advanced construction management pursuant to professional services agreement regarding intergovernmental service agreements. You'll remember last time we actually made the selection, and this is actually the final contract. Thank you. I'll take that as a motion. And second is on the floor with Modest. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, the sec, the next one is discuss and consider approval of the second supplemental agreement with Susan Roth for engineering services relating to drainage master planning. This is the, which will get us to the next phase of, of our grant with TWDB. Motion, and I'll second. And she's on the line if you have any questions. But if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Yes, sir. Do you need it?
Item eight?
Yes. And just, just for the record, this money comes from the grant itself.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next one is discuss and consider approving proposal agreement with forensic pathology staffing for autopsy report continuation and completion. And this was also discussed, but this is actually the contract and the agreement. And I will say it's been vetted by, well, let me go ahead and have you say that. Has it been vetted?
Yes, it has.
Okay. And this is, Iday, what were you going to say to me? They're on, they're online?
They're online.
Okay. The forensic pathology staffing group is online, and they will be, they will be using this agreement in order to help complete reports that are necessary for the completion of the administration of these, of these reports, getting these reports medically and administratively complete to the authorities.
Executive session that we need to discuss on this?
No, we're good to go.
We're good to go. Motion? And how about a second? Okay, I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Problems, I have Wi-Fi problems.
I know. It's a little delayed. We're going to wait for you when you, we know that you're, you're there.
Sorry.
Discuss and consider, item number 10, is discuss and consider use of ARPA funds for the out-of-county incarceration COVID-19 prevention measures in correctional facilities project. Dale has the numbers here along with Iday, and I want you to know that I don't see him on, but this has been vetted by Tom Leatherby. And so what this would do is, Dale, it would allow the county to recuperate those dollars spent for out-of-county through our fiscal year. And what numbers can you provide for the court today?
I didn't have anything available at the time, but I noticed at least over $150,000.
Okay.
How much?
At least over $150,000.
But Dale, I'm confused because the out-of-county burn rate is over $400,000.
That, that's all, that's the budget we set for it.
Okay, but when I get my, my dollars every day that keep increasing on my reports, those aren't accurate dollars? Okay, so how would you, so I guess, Court, what, what we're asking here is through, through September 30th, that amount of money, that it be recuperated under the American Rescue Plan Act. Is that correct, Dale?
That's right.
All right, is there a motion?
Wait, through when, Judge?
Through this, through the fiscal year? Through September 30th?
I thought we had discussed doing it going forward also. Is that?
That could be a motion too. I was just trying to baby step it, but if you want to.
No, just making sure, because I thought we talked about using it for what we'd already spent and, and the upcoming fiscal year, because we have another year of allocations for that.
Correct. We certainly can. We just don't have enough info yet. If you'd like, what I could do is maybe have Dale and work on maybe like a forecast. But for now, how about your motion, could, maybe we could amend it to say that we are asking for it to be approved at the end of the fiscal year with a, you know, amount to be brought forth in the next meeting on a, on a.
Well, the reason why we're saying this, Your Honor, is that we've already closed last fiscal year, and there was some of this expense in last fiscal year. We just want to recover that cost as well as any, any costs we have currently.
Commissioner Chesney, let's put it on for the next one again to, to discuss that, how we can forecast it, because it hasn't happened yet.
Okay, that, I just wanted to get, what I was hoping we could do too, since we're talking about this, is to get kind of a, a running tally, because I know we'd also, in previous court, talked about spending some of the ARPA money for the, for the ME supplement, things of those nature. So if we could kind of put this on the list, when we put the whole thing back on the agenda for an agenda item, so that we have an up-to-date tally, that would be helpful, because.
Listening. I'll make sure that Iday, yes, they're online now. I see that they're listening to you.
And I, if the, so is the number 150, is that what I heard?
It's at least that amount.
It's at least that amount. Dale, is that, forgive me again for putting you on the spot, but is that, will get us through to September 30th?
That's to recover the costs spent last fiscal year.
So Commissioner Chesney, that's just for last fiscal year, 150?
I would just say whatever the, if, if Dale's 100% sure that the 150 is the right number, great. Or we could make it a broader motion that said whatever the cost is for this fiscal year.
I think that's better.
I would do the broader amount, yes.
He's saying yes to you.
The broader amount, yes.
Okay. Then I would just ask to amend the, whoever made the motion to amend it to.
I'll amend.
Is that for December 31st?
September 30th.
That'll go through this last fiscal year and this fiscal year to the September 30th of 2023.
I'll amend, Commissioner Chesney, and ask that maybe you second. I'll amend the motion for the clerk, that it include last year and this year to September 30th, the end of our fiscal year, for out-of-county housing.
I'll second if there isn't a second.
There's not? Well, it's okay. I gave it to you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? All right. And then the next one, and we have Tomas Duran here as a resource. It's also a recuperation of funds, and that's to discuss and consider using ARPA for the Noises County Employee Self-Funded Group Health Program COVID-19 Diagnostics and Testing Project. And you have, you had, you received Commissioners in your packet. It was late, but it was there. A, basically a summary of what those costs are. So I'll ask Dale to start, and then Tomas to just let everybody know that you verified these numbers. Dale?
Yes, Your Honor, Tomas and I have gone through several issues of how we can recover the medical claims as well as the prescription claims for the COVID we had through, going back from March of 2021, we have with the start of ARPA funds, going through present. I know Tomas has gone through with Boone Chapman, as well as our, our prescription carrier, to cover the cost. He'll have a spreadsheet showing you the amount of each. The total amount currently is $1,729,000, so asking for reimbursement for that cost. I'll let Tomas continue on, on that if, if he has any, any questions for him.
And, and one more time, the amount of money?
$1,729,000.
Okay, thank you. Tomas, can you shed, I know that's really what you were going to say, but do you want to shed any else, any light on it? This is a comprehensive total, correct? I don't know if it's on.
He dies twice a day.
It does.
It died. Not a problem. Just, I'll explain the discrepancy between the one that you got on Friday and today's. It's just simply that they have put a filter when we ran the numbers and excluded the difference between the $700,000 and the $1,700,000. But essentially, it's exactly what Dale Ashley has said, just, it's a recoup of the expenses paid for both medical from March 31, I mean, March of 21, to the end of, of last month. And that's basically it.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Some move.
And a second?
Second.
All right. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay, thank you, Tomas.
And, and when this comes out of Judges, I'm sure a question, I guess. This comes out of the self-funded group program. This is ARPA funds, so this will come off that 55 million total that we had?
It will, but it does, here's the good news. It has its own, like, category. So it does not affect that lost revenue government services, which is very important.
Right, but that, so, but just.
But yes, it does.
I think I, 1.7 or 1.9?
I heard 1.7.
1.7 million.
1.7, and then we plus the 150. So we just basically spent another couple of million dollars out of the total 55 that we had left.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, again, just articulating for the public, so, okay.
You're right. By the way, you may want to wonder why March 21st, when clearly COVID was affecting us in 2020? Just, that's the rule. So I just want you to know that if you think about it later or see it, wondering what happened to 2020, ARPA was given a start date of March 21. And so we can't go and recover those 2020 losses. And I just want you to know, we had significant 2020 medical and pharmacy losses prior to March of 21. But this is still a great way to recuperate costs.
Just for your information, if you'd like to know, it was almost a million eight prior to March 21 that we cannot recover.
That we cannot recover, Commissioner Chesney. I just want you to know that. So that's, we've done, and I'm, I have to tell you, I'm especially proud of our team, because I, this particular notion came after, came in January, after the final rules. And the Noises County team went to Washington no less than two times physically, and multiple times with Secretary Adiemo on the phone, asking that counties be, be given this opportunity. I just wish it could have gone all the way back, but unfortunately, Congress made it very specific. And so just want you to know that, that there is money that we lost that we cannot recover from COVID-19 medical. But this helps a lot. Thank you, Tomas. Thank you, Tomas. The next item is item 12. And again, we've already done this before, but this is the cleaning up housekeeping of how it looks on our order to have Mayor, listen to me, Mayor, Judge Protem schedule, and it goes on seniority, and we made a correction because the seniority was not correct. And Iday tells me it's all in order now. Is there a motion? It's in your packet too.
Is it the one we show online, or is it the?
Well, I think it, it's, you have it correct in your packet. Is that correct, Iday? It's all correct? Yeah.
So it.
It's Gonzalez Chesney, Madas Hernandez.
Okay. Okay.
For the record.
What, did we, hang on a second. Did we correct what I'd put in the packet? Because I was taking it from, since Commissioner Modest was already Protem, and then I went from there. So Commissioner, it's been Protem, and so then I just picked it up from after him and went in the order.
All, all I can tell you is that I asked Iday if it was in good order, and she said yes. I, I don't know if that's how it was done, Commissioner. I'll tell you the way I think it's done. It's by seniority.
Well, okay, so I want, I was wanting to put it on. So the way, the way I put it on, and I'm just making sure that it got put on the way that I put it on. And if it didn't, I just need to know what the correction was, because I thought I heard the word correction.
I think Commissioner Hernandez is the one that made the suggestion, is that correct?
Oh, I did. I requested that Commissioner Wenzel, since he is the senior commissioner, and I think he was passed by, so I suggest that he should be next.
Instead of you?
That's correct, Judge. I don't think I've been.
Okay, and I think that correction was made, Commissioner Chesney.
Okay, so.
You're going to get your turn, man.
No one told me, since it was, no offense, but since it was my intended item, nobody told me there was a correction. So I would have liked, if someone could have told me what, what the correction.
No, we didn't post anything without telling you, Commissioner. We talked to your assistant. And when I communicated with her, she said, like, everything here is fine. That she, we work with our office and, and everything that is here is correct. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't correct anything after the fact.
If you're not, um.
We can, we can double check, and we can hold on this, and then just to make sure, like, everything is fine. Is that okay?
I, I don't think it was anything to, to slight you. I think it was Commissioner Hernandez's recommendation that said, hold on, I think it should be Commissioner Gonzalez, so obviously, no one mentioned that, but, um.
He didn't want to be next.
He can pass.
I just don't think I've, I've been here long enough to be able to do that, or to want to do that. Commissioner Gonzalez was bypassed last time, so I'm going back, you know, giving him the.
Right, and I was just picking, I was just picking it up from where it was, and to ensure that everyone got a chance, because the way the terms run, I don't know what Commissioner Hernandez is or isn't going to do, but he won't be able to serve as Judge Protem if we go on this rotation, if he doesn't run for reelection. So I was picking it up from Commissioner Mares and going from there. But if the court wants to change it, then the court.
Well, I think Commissioner Hernandez wishes to change it.
Yes, no.
He's saying he'd like to pass on that, Commissioner Chesney.
Okay, then we'll just start with the rotation being Commissioner Gonzalez and going one, two, three, four, that way.
Was there a motion, Emma? I don't remember. Let me make the motion now. I'll make that. You got a motion? Ask for the motion?
If you'll just clarify what the motion is, Judge, so it's clear for the record, since my backup system, if, and that was changed since I put it on.
Okay, the, the motion is that we approve the Judge Protem's schedule, which would include, it's by order of seniority, by our own policy, which would, for the record, be Commissioner Gonzalez Chesney, Mares, and then Hernandez. If you went, because it would go again.
If that is the will of the court, then I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number 13, I'll just call your attention to Chief Clack's earlier comments. He had to leave, but it was in regards to where we are on, um, our burn index. Um, discuss any need for an order that would prohibit the use and sale of aerial fireworks in the unincorporated areas of the county during 4th of July firework season. Discuss and consider adopting an order if needed, prohibiting the use and sale of aerial fireworks in the unincorporated areas of the county during 4th of July season. There are really specific rules here. Uh, you want to share those with us, Jeff? I mean, it's amazing. You have to have a timeframe that gives everybody sufficient time, so it's not like we can do this later. Is that correct?
You would have to adhere to the rules. I don't know what exactly those dates are, to be honest with you.
Pretty sure that they're now, that's why it's on here now. I just wanted you to know that. We're not too early. Apparently, there has to be a, a certain timeframe that's given, and so that's why it's on your agenda right now.
I believe the chief said June 14th was the date.
That's what he said. June 14th?
It is June 14th.
Okay, so just wanted you all to know that.
The 22nd, again?
Right.
Is that why they issued?
Yes, Commissioner, uh, the next court is after the June 14th date, so we thought of getting it in right now, so.
And the chief said, because we'd be so dry at that point, it doesn't even matter if we do get rain, because that was something I was gonna want to add in, in a motion, that, you know, if we drop below the index, but apparently, if, I mean, we're too dry, it doesn't matter.
There's so much fuel on the ground right now, Commissioner, that it, it's going in. I don't see us getting, unless we get a significant amount of rain and a concentrated time, that it's gonna make a big difference.
Well, I mean, uh, motion to accept, uh, Chief Clack's recommendation.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, he's trying to reconnect. There he is. Let me give him a heads up here. Commissioner Chesney, we're gonna, oh, he's waiting. Is he on?
He's on.
Commissioner Chesney, what you, um, what we were saying is that, um, what we, Commissioner Mares, would you repeat it just real quick, like, your, your question and?
Oh, my question was, uh, to someone who was presented earlier by Chief Clack, that there would be too much fuel on the ground already, so no matter the amount of rain, it still would, um, make it, um, a dangerous situation for, uh, maintaining aerial fireworks. So I'm just going off the chief's, uh, recommendation that he mentioned earlier. And that was my motion.
And it was motioned and seconded.
Yeah.
We've lost him.
So he's, yeah.
Yeah, he's on a, um, a weak signal. Uh, anyway, um, it's my understanding, Louis, that the city has already done this as well.
So I, I don't know, Judge, I can check with him today. I haven't talked to him yet.
Okay, I thought somebody said that, but maybe I'm wrong about that. Well, this is sad, you know, for all of us, uh, that love the celebration, and all I can tell you is that, um, these are the hard choices of extreme weather, and, um.
Too many rules.
The, the chief is just, you know, very, very concerned, and he is the, he's the chief of the chiefs, the chief of the fire chiefs. So, okay, um, well, we are done. All, we already voted. Is that right, Emma? We got it? The next one is the, is the, is the outdoor burning? And so it's discuss and consider an order prohibiting the outdoor burning? And so this is the actual adoption. We'll have to make a motion to adopt the order for the prohibition of outdoor burning as well. Is there a motion? Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. And then, um, so Louis, we'll get you those. Emma, did I get you everything that you needed on the first one? I don't, just, yeah, I guess we did, because it was just a adoption of an order. We're good. All right, the next one is, I need, uh, Michael Robinson. I didn't quite give him heads up, so let me skip for just a second, and ask if JP Crom is on the line? He is? All right, so let's skip to the generator resiliency project, and just please remember that, um, we're not discussing the contract at all. We're just discussing the concepts today. JP, I'll let you unmute, and we're on item number 16 for the clerk. Uh, Kara, we skipped 15 to get Michael up here.
Okay.
Okay? We're just moving quickly. There's JP online. Uh, welcome, JP. The item today is to give us a background on the gen, on, general, an update from you guys on the generator resiliency project, without going into the issues that are not ready for, for discussion, which is the contract itself.
Sure, Judge. Yeah, if, I really would like to entertain any questions that the commissioners have, because we are in a procurement window. There's very little that I want to say about the project. Um, we have a project that's been designed, it has been bid, and we are in the award process based on decisions that the court has made in prior sessions about, uh, a certain company receiving that award. So I want to stay clear of any of those procurement-related issues, but if there are technical questions, we'll be happy to speak to those.
I'll open it up for questions at this time. Yes, sir.
Uh, basically, what I want to know, and, because, uh, I believe Shane was in, uh, Public Works Office, and, uh, some, but he was overheard telling people there, and, and the county engineer, that this wasn't gonna work at all. How can you?
Yeah, I'm not sure that that information's true, Commissioner. Uh, if there's something specific that you're aware of from an engineering standpoint, I'd love to hear that and, and get that sorted out, but we have a system that's been designed by an engineer, signed and sealed by an engineer, and, and is expected to work.
Well, this came, uh, like I said, it came from one of your folks, Shane, and he was in Public Works Office when he made that remark, that they knew this system was not gonna work from the very beginning, and there's no way the county's gonna benefit from it. And, uh, the last time Shane was here, I had asked him to be here, and didn't show up the first time. The second time, he showed up, but then he said, uh, he had to go back to the hospital, because he had a blood clot. Uh, if I'd have known he had a blood clot, I wouldn't have asked him to come by. But, uh, he chose to come, to come to court, and then he told Public Works that, uh, he just got out of the hospital, because he had a blood clot, so Mr. Pimentel asked him to, to go back to the hospital. We didn't, we didn't know, we didn't have any notice that he was in the hospital, till he brought it up. But, uh, he has been overheard saying that this system's not gonna work, and they, they all knew about it from the very beginning. That's, those are his words.
Oh, wait, you have to unmute. JP, you need to unmute.
Thank you. Uh, so that, I can't speak to that. That is, sounds like a little bit of hearsay, Commissioner. We, and if, and if it was overheard, then I hate, I hate that that's out there, and that was overheard incorrectly. We have a system that's been designed by an engineer, signed, sealed, and, um.
Well, this is why I've been asking for Shane. I've been asking for Shane to come and, uh, talk to us about that.
Sure. Yeah, so I, I oversee Shane, so I'm, I'm very familiar with the details of the project. And, um, you can see Shane's dedication to the county, the fact that he's willing to talk to you while experiencing a blood clot, but in this case, uh, I'm, I'm happy to step up and talk about the generator and say that we have a project that's ready to be constructed, should, uh, should we finalize the contract negotiations.
So anyway, you're saying that it is gonna work then, and if we have any problems, you know, you stand by what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And so we've already put this bid out, and it's awarded, or?
So we, we made, uh, the selection and the award several weeks back, but they're still in the contract phase.
Judge, can I chime in a little bit?
Yes.
So what we've done is, we've done conditional selection first, and then we'll come back for the award and execution of the contract at the end.
Thank you, Michael.
And we're planning to come back on June 22nd.
Conditional selection, wait, is that something new? Have we done that before?
We, we've been doing this for quite some time now, uh, probably the last two to three months. Uh, in working with Jenny's office, uh, we determined that what's actually happening is, when we, when the court selects, and this came up when we were doing the, the Bob Hall Pier project, and we ran into some issues, uh, that by setting the award and execution to occur at the same time at the end of the project, it allows the court the ability to, uh, keep those matters that are being ongoing in negotiations uh, without having, um, um, to get involved in discussions while negotiations are going on. It prevents, uh, other, uh, interested parties from contacting the court or anyone else while those negotiations are going on, until we do the award. And so we've been doing that now for three months.
What, what's the reason? I mean, besides what you just said, I mean.
That's the reason.
That's the main reason?
Right.
So, and what do you call that?
It's conditional selection. It's like when you select an engineer, uh, y'all select an engineer, and then later on, you come back and you do the execution of a contract. So while you're in that selection process, you have the ability to, to do negotiations. If the negotiations are good, then you come back and you award that contract to the engineer. So it's the same process that we're using for that.
So it's not an automatic thing for this contractor to get this contract, then, if we don't agree to some of the?
So that's the same, the same as it's kind of always been? The, it's, nothing's finalized until the court executes the contract at the end.
So we can add, how many bidders did you have for this thing?
Okay, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have to stop right here. We've already, you know, we'll have to stop.
We're doing so good.
I know. Well, I'm sorry, just the council is advising us.
I think we're going a little beyond what we need to in public.
I think we're, if you have any questions, feel free to call Michael.
Well.
Well, actually, I'm sorry. Feel free to, feel free to go back and rewind the tape that gave all the information.
Yeah, on the previous court, it would describe who, who bid and what the amounts were bid at that time.
Okay, but my question is, if we don't, if we don't agree with what they're telling us, we can either, what, go out for more bids?
Oh, so on, on all projects, just in general terms, uh, we do conditional selection. Uh, so we, the selection committee brings that back to the court. We recommend conditional selection. The court then, uh, affirms that selection. We enter into negotiations, and then we come back to do, uh, award and execute of the contract, and that's the point at which the court votes to affirm that selection, because you've already selected when you did conditional selection, and all we're doing at that point is just bringing you the final contract, which you've already told me to go work on. And so your opportunity to decide who you want to do work with occurs at the time of conditional selection. When we come to do the award and execute, that's where finalizing everything that y'all already set in motion. So, so your most important time occurs during conditional selection.
Conditional selection comes to us, Michael, when we?
Yes, it comes to you.
And we decide, we?
Yeah, that's when I tell y'all, we had so many bidders, and here were, here's what they bid, and, uh, on a, on a construction project, uh, this is the, and just for y'all's information, this is the last one, I think, that we did under CSP. And under CSP, uh, we have to go with the scores that are awarded. And that's how y'all determine who gets selected, the vendor that had the highest score and the lowest price. That's what we bring to y'all to recommend. Under CSP rules, that's how y'all have to award to. In the future, what we talked about was that all construction projects, we're gonna go under invitation for bids, which is competitive bids, which we award to the lowest bidder. And so we would come to court, and we would recommend the low bidder. But this is the very last project that I understand that we were doing using that CSP methodology.
Okay. So we're at the end of that, okay?
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Michael, I actually want to make you get up again, because we skipped item number 15, um, which is a discussal, discussal, listen to me. The discussion of the courthouse, courtroom chairs and related matters. And, um, I think that Commissioner Hernandez put this on, and has been kind of waiting for you to give him a little bit of background, but I'll ask him to ask you the question.
Okay, so what's the question?
Well, Mike, uh, when, uh, we had our fire marshal, uh, I understood he took charge of, uh, removing those chairs, and he had assistance from people in the sheriff's office, that he borrowed some inmates to remove those shares, okay? So when I got calls asking for the chairs, because people were assuming they were gonna go back, or they knew they were, they were gonna go back in the courtrooms, and there's no chairs to be had, so I called the fire marshal, and I asked him, I said, what did you do with those shares? Where, where are they? Because they wanted them back. He said, and I also said, uh, and under whose authority did you remove them? Or go under, go to the public works, uh, cage that was under lock and key, and you opened the lock and removed those shares? Uh, you know, he should have asked somebody, you know, if those shares were gonna be reused. And I asked him, when I asked him under whose authority, he told me the judge told him to go and remove, uh, things that were fire hazardous, and then I asked him, so where, where, where did you take them? He says, the landfill. And so, I mean, I worked there in purchasing. Uh, do you not still have the procedure where people turn them in, and you check them off, or, you know? Because I know we used to tag furniture.
Mm-hmm. So, um, I can't comment on whatever might have transpired with the fire marshal and the chairs, because I have no knowledge of anything that happened. What I was notified was, uh, after the chairs had been already, I guess.
Removed?
Removed, and I was tasked with finding chairs for the courts to put in their audience seating. Uh, the county has a surplus, uh, and salvage, uh, procedure.
I know.
For, uh, items that are deemed, um, salvageable. Um, I didn't see the condition of the items that you're speaking of, so I can't really comment on whether they were surplus salvage, or whether they were deemed, uh, as trash.
No, but the protocol is, they notify purchasing, that they're gonna, they have these excess chairs, and the way it used to work, you know, uh, Elsa would say, you know, bring what you got, we'd storm in the back, you know, hallway, and then y'all would decide, uh, what to do with them. And, uh, we throw, we don't get rid of anything, because back then, uh, we had auctions, and people would come and view the merchandise, and they would auction. They would buy the, the surplus that we had, and I just don't think this fire marshal was qualified to do that, okay? Uh, so, did he ever tell you what they did with the chairs, and, uh?
So again, I don't have any, uh, information to share with the court. I don't have any personal knowledge of any communication with the fire marshal about this, so.
Well, all I can say is, uh, you know, this fire marshal cost us a lot of money, okay? And the fact that he never got certified, we spend the money, we spend the money on truck, on new truck for him, okay? And now he takes, takes it upon himself to get rid of furniture that we could reuse again, and takes it to the landfill. So I don't know what the remedy can be, uh, or what. I guess this court would decide what they want to do, if they want to bill him for it, or what, you know?
Yeah, so because of that last statement, I'm forced to now delve into a little bit more, and then maybe we can move on. But number one, these chairs are not chairs that have replacement parts. Is that correct?
Yeah, the chairs that, um, are used in the audience seating are the same ones that are sitting here in front of us today. Yeah, the chairs that are used in the audience seating are the same ones that are sitting here in front of us today. They're obsolete. We don't, we don't have replacement parts. We've had chairs break in the past and I was told that we can't repair them.
And they were slated, just for the record, they're slated for, just like we've been working systematically on the jury chairs, which we've now completed, or at least in the process of completion with, they've been ordered. These gallery chairs are also, there's a phased in approach for these new gallery chairs. Is that correct?
Yes, the county auditors established a fund that puts some monies into where we can replace chairs. We've completed all of the front of the house jury chair replacements for all of the district courts. And even back to 2012, the courts were asking for their audience seating to be replaced.
Right.
We didn't have funding at that time. We didn't even have a funding mechanism at that time. But we were able to put in jury seating in 2011. And then we, those chairs had already gone obsolete. And we replaced those front of the house chairs a second time here in the last two years. And then the next place to go was the audience seating to have those replaced.
And, and also, these chairs are not on our, they're not on our asset list, so they're not subject to those asset protocols?
The surplus and salvage property are for assets only. The county, I believe before I got here, changed the value of assets up from one thousand to five thousand dollars. And then they made a list of items that are considered exceptions, items that we would still continue to track, like computers. But furniture, as far as I could research, did not appear in any of those documents.
It's not on there.
As an asset.
Also, you are, for counting terms, anything that's affixed to the ground or the walls is not considered an asset, it's considered part of the building.
Okay, and then finally, so we now know that it's not an asset, we know that they're scheduled for replacement, we know that they're obsolete and don't have parts. And although he's not here to defend himself, we also know that in a statement that he gave, Jose Lebatas said, stated that he had called Romeo in procurement to ask specifically about these chairs. And he was green lighted, so to speak, in making certain that he thought what he perceived was a fire hazard and also just simply an asset that used to be, you know, utilized but is no longer needed. It wasn't that he was trying to do anything without checking. He actually did make the inquiry of procurement. And it's neither here nor there, what he thought he received. But he did make the inquiry and the concept was that they were not tagged, there was no inventory, there was no record. And so it was assumed that they were no longer in use and no longer needed and no longer in a condition since they were not fully operational, they had been taken apart, that that was something to be disposed of. That was his statement, and can you verify that?
I can't verify on, I can't speak on Romeo's behalf or on.
But is that your understanding?
My, my understanding was that we were asked, that Romeo was asked, did he know where these items came from or who they belonged to? And he said that he did not recognize those items because Romeo doesn't work in the courtrooms and so he doesn't see what they have in their, in their seating area. I understand that there were different items besides chairs in that space. And, and so Romeo's comments were simply that he didn't know about that material.
Right.
What happened after that or what decisions were made beyond that conversation, I do not know.
Understood. I'm just trying to address the facts of these obsolete, zero value on our books, disassembled, not tagged inventory that was disposed of. And, and you've helped me understand that, so.
Let me just, can I say something, Judge?
Of course.
Michael, you and I talked, and for the record too, I think I sent you a copy or I know I sent A.D. a copy and somebody else, I don't know if you have the copy, will you not, A.D.? But I sent you a copy of an Attorney General's opinion, you know? And that opinion said that anytime you get rid of any kind, even mentioned furniture, it didn't have to be an excess item, furniture is not listed under excess. But it said even furniture, anything has to do above whatever we say. Like we know we said five thousand dollars, right? That, that anything under five thousand dollars, we can get, we can get rid of unless they're computers and they're marked and they're tagged. But anything, anything of that, of value, even furniture, whatever we get rid of in this county has to have the approval of the Commissioner's Court, right?
I didn't read this Attorney General opinion. I don't recall seeing it. Perhaps it's in my email inbox, but.
I'll give you, I'll give you a copy of it. But I think for the record, Judge, is that, and we should follow an Attorney General's opinion. And I think it's in our policy also. I don't care if it's in the wall or not on the wall or whatever it is. But if it's valued over five thousand dollars, might be some broken, I don't think they're all were broken. You know, that's a lot of chairs. And you're talking about, I don't know, what, fifty chairs maybe or more, I don't know. But I'm sure not, there weren't, there weren't fifty chairs that were broken, cause some of the judges were asking back for them. But, you know, according, again, Attorney General's opinion, we, anything that gets disposed in this county or get rid of should come to the Commissioner's Court for approval.
So on that point, if you, if you look at the purchasing policy for salvage and surplus property, this court has appointed me to be the person that administrates that activity on behalf of the court. And so the court does not get individual actions brought to you every time a chair comes to my office to get disposed of.
I didn't say a chair. I said, I said value over five thousand dollars because we already have a policy that said anything from under five thousand we can get rid of. That's our policy. Anything above that, I said needs to come to Commissioner's Court. I don't remember giving you the authority to get rid of whatever you wanna get rid of. I don't remember that, but.
You didn't give it to me. It was given before I got here. That, that policy existed before I was your purchasing agent.
I'm just saying that, you know, that, that if it's not under policy, that that can be done, it needs to come to the Commissioner's Court.
So what I would say, to try to offer some help in this area, is if the court has suggestions to add language to that salvage and surplus property, y'all can provide that to me in writing and then I can give that to the purchasing board. And if the purchasing board deems it necessary to update the policy, then they will update the policy and then I'll come back to this court and then the court can adopt that updated policy.
Well, I don't know about updating the policy because it's already there. We can destroy, we can get rid of five thousand dollars and under. You know, and everything, it tells you that everything above that has to come to Commissioner's Court. I mean, it's not like it's a different policy, it's already there, you know?
No, I'm telling you, the polit, you need to read the policy. It does state that y'all have given that authority to my office.
I imagine that for cars in particular, for cars that get exchanged and equipment, that's where it comes into play. We have not had a consent agenda item in a long time that deals with that. So what he's saying is that your policy is being adhered to in, in, in another policy that already exists and that he's following it.
So yes, every, every time you see like Public Works buys some new equipment and they're gonna trade in a piece of equipment to get a discount on that price that they're paying, that's on the agenda. It's, it's brought to the court. Y'all get an opportunity to see the value of the item that, that the trade in is being proposed for.
You said the key word there, brought to the Commissioner's Court.
Yes, for vehicles, yes, cause they fit the over five thousand category. So we bring those to you.
We're talking about almost forty thousand dollars here, Mike.
That's.
The value of the assets are not determined by the congregate value, they're determined by the value of the individual asset. So.
I don't know who says the value.
The individual chair, like each one of these chairs, they have to be over the five thousand dollars to fit that category. And those individual chairs are never gonna amount to that. And I think that's probably why the previous auditor, Ms. Hayes, increased that value. And at that time, all of the furniture assets were purged from inventory and that was brought to court to tell y'all about that. And the court voted on approving that change to the asset value back at that time.
Is that, is that, is that part of an order or what, court?
Yes, the court did it.
I remember that.
And they've, and they've adjusted on it twice.
I don't remember that coming to saying that, but.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you grab it so that everybody can, can have it? The bottom line is, there was no.
I'd just like to have everything come, if it's gonna be an expensive item, Mike, I'd like it to come to Commissioner's Court for approval.
But, but the bottom line is that.
If we gotta do something else, it's forcing a policy.
Let me recognize you, just a second. Let me recognize you.
We can do the policy, okay?
Sure.
But I mean, I think right now, I'm just saying, from what I've read here in the Attorney General's opinion, that includes furniture, right? And you might, you might go back to the policy, but I'm telling you, you know, if we get a true opinion on Attorney General's, he's gonna come back to say it includes furniture and everything, you know, so I'm just.
There's still a disconnect here and I'm just gonna have to ask the county attorney, at least, you know, address this. We can address it whenever, but there's a major disconnect. The value of the chairs did not exceed five thousand dollars. They did not exceed fair market value of five thousand dollars, so the policy, well, I, I've asked, I've asked Dale, I've asked the people that value this asset and it did not.
Dale says values, I didn't know Dale did that. Mike.
Excuse me one second. Dale absolutely values it. That's how we get the asset determination. That's how, that's how that happens.
I didn't go through Dale.
No, I'm saying to you that there is no asset that was disposed of that reached that amount. Now, that's.
That's your opinion.
It's not an opinion. It's, it's, all you have to do is ask procurement or ask Dale what the value is. It wasn't even, it didn't even rise to an asset level. But the bottom line is, is that.
Thank you very much.
Is that the Attorney General opinion is being adhered to through our own policies. And that's the bottom line. But if you need clarification on it, you can get clarification, but the policies are in action and being adhered to.
Mike.
May I recognize you, Commissioner Hernandez?
Pardon?
May I recognize you?
Sure, you can.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mike, how much money have we spent so far in replacing those shares?
We haven't spent any money yet. We've placed an order for.
How much would it cost to replace those shares?
We haven't got the equipment in yet. We've just got quotes.
And what kind of quotes are you getting?
I'll be the one to be able to answer that.
Mike, what kind of quotes?
So the value of the items that are being put in, which are brand new items, are around forty six thousand dollars for three courts. That's three courts worth of audience seating.
And that, how do, how do they sell those shares? In a row like that or individually?
Individually. Each, each part even, the, even the little brackets that attach to them if they're part of an assembly. Each piece is charged just separately. So it's the value of each individual piece. And there is no value on the furniture that's going to qualify it as an asset.
And the same thing with our jury chairs, we also purchase them that way as well.
Five shares per row, like those?
They're not bought in rows, they're bought in.
No, I understand individually.
Yeah, it's, it's whatever, whatever the number of seats are. I would also offer that, you know, anytime that folks are getting new furniture from our office, if they don't need their old furniture, we take it back. If it can be reused or reassigned to another department, we certainly do that. If, if the arms are messed up, we'll, we'll remove the arms if we're able to. Some chairs, you can't remove the arms without destroying the chair. And in those cases, those items are deemed as waste and so they go for trash. And like I said, I didn't see the condition of the items that are in question. So I can't tell you whether they were trash or not because I didn't get a chance to see them myself. But I do know for a fact that they are obsolete items that I can't buy replacement parts for.
So what you're saying is you should have gone through.
And the other thing I would add is, and, and maybe we can talk about it when we're looking at the procedures to, to help things in the future. But if Public Works is charged with removing items from a space because they're attached to the building and they're gonna store them somewhere, there should be some signage placed on it that this is going to go back to another location. Normally, items are turned into purchasing, right, for us to take possession of them, okay? But if they're never intended to come to purchasing, if Public Works is removing them maybe to paint walls or replace a floor and they're gonna stick them in the hallway or something, they should have a sign on them saying these belong to one seventeen District Court. So that it's very clear to anyone who walks by that this is not gonna go away.
They were under lock and key in Public Works storage room.
Okay, let's, let's move on. Hey, Juan, could you sit down just for a moment?
No, no, I won't even say something.
I, I know, but I'm waiting, we need to fin, I'll get to you. The way it works here is that, that I call on everybody and it makes for a better decorum. Give me just a second. Let him finish.
All right, let him finish.
Remember? Okay, go ahead, Michael.
I'm not making any accusations at, at all.
You're saying that that would be a good new procedure.
I'm offering as a possibility to try to prevent something like that from happening is to label things that are in the hallway, cause we, we walk by the hallway. I don't assume that it belongs to purchasing, so I don't remove it from the hallway. I leave it there. If, if it had a sign on it that said it's going somewhere, then that would make it easier, I think, for an average person to know, okay, this belongs to somebody. But with no sign on it and I don't know what condition it was placed in and it could be behind a locked door or a locked room. But I don't know if it was just all chunked in a pile or if it was neatly placed and it had a sign around it saying this belongs to so and so. I don't, I didn't get to see any of it again, so I can't really comment on what I would have decided to do had I seen.
If you see it in the hallway, you don't touch it, right?
I, I don't think items should be placed in the hallway.
Well, but you said if you see, if you see it in the hallway, you don't touch it.
That's me personally.
Well, that's what you said. So why couldn't it be assumed the same thing in a, in a storage room that's locked? You know, you don't touch it. It's there for a purpose, for a reason.
Yeah, like I said, again, I can't comment on the person that made that decision at that time. I, I wasn't that person. I don't want this to get deflected towards me in any way. We weren't there to witness what was going on and what condition was there, so I can't make that determination.
Okay, Michael. Okay, thank you. Look, the, it's, I've got a, a question here from Commissioner Chesney for Michael. And, and also from Commissioner Modis here. I'm gonna let Commissioner Chesney go first, Commissioner Modis, cause I saw his hand. Commissioner Chesney?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead now. You'll have to, there you go.
Michael, do you know how many chairs we're talking about here? What?
I, I don't know the exact number, sir. I, I would assume if the courtroom is a similar size to this courtroom, it might have a similar amount of chairs as we have here in Commissioner's Court.
Was it one set of courtroom chairs or four sets of courtroom chairs?
I, I was asked to purchase chairs for three courts.
So three courtrooms for the chairs and what you're, you're saying, did you say they were obsolete since you never saw them?
No, I've, I've seen chairs in the courtroom, I'm looking at them right now.
Right, so.
They're obsolete, they're obsolete because of information I received from Juan Pimentel's office. When chairs broke, I believe in Judge, either Judge Watts or, or Judge, I can't remember if it was her court or Judge Manderes' court where a piece broke. And I was informed that they're not able to buy the replacement bracket because it's not available on the market anymore. And so that was some time ago.
That doesn't, so, so that didn't mean all of them were not usable. That means one row of them. I can't believe three courtrooms, every single chair was obsolete, couldn't have been used, couldn't have been donated to charity.
So when I say, so when I say obsolete, yes.
Let me, let me finish what I'm saying. Other than just throwing them away, it would have seemed to me that they could have had some use. Like I said, donate to charity, donate to somebody that, you know, we have people all the time coming in asking for things that, that, you know, they need. So it's kind of hard for me to believe that three courtrooms full of chairs could, should have just been disposed of and didn't have a value of over five thousand dollars. So I, I am kind of questioning, you know, this under five thousand dollar value. So I guess I'll ask Dale, since I heard Dale's name mentioned too, that, that the auditor said it was obsolete or worth less than five thousand dollars. Dale, did, did you say that too or do you know that or?
No, no, you're, the way we interpret the, the, the chairs in question, the chairs in question are not considered a capital asset because they're affixed to the building. According to the accounting rules, if something's affixed to the building, whether it's the floor, the wall, the ceiling, it becomes the value of the building. So we do not have them listed as a, a fixed asset on our records. So the only way we can determine the cost of these assets is the replacement value.
Right, so the replacement value was substantially over five thousand dollars. So under your logic, then the replacement value would have been how you valued those obsolete chairs or those chairs?
That's how we would normally value, but again, would not be considered an asset because as Michael's saying, each one comes as, in, in, in pieces and parts, so you would have to evaluate each, each one individually. But in, in total of the replacement value of the, of the chairs in question, as Michael says, around fifty or sixty thousand dollars. I didn't quite get the total. But that would be not, not considered an asset, but it, it's still a, a, a cost to the county. still a, 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 a cost to the county.
So Dale, Commissioner Chesney, can I do a follow-up so that it makes more sense? So if we have a, if we have a vehicle, and we're going to say it's an old vehicle, and it's going to get, you know, sent to surplus for salvage, we're not saying, are we, that the replacement value of the vehicle is the value of the, of the old vehicle? In other words, let's get a, just to make sure that doesn't get missed. I know, I know you don't think that either, Commissioner.
That's an actual asset.
No.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that we're on the same page there.
No, I don't think, yeah, I don't, I don't think if you replace, uh, old chairs with $50,000 with the new chairs, and that makes the old chairs worth $50,000.
That's all I would say.
I just don't think it's, I, I just don't think it's worth under five either. So I, I would say to, to purchasing that, um, you know, when something like this occurs, if there's question, then, you know, when someone's just disposing of a significant amount of assets, that needs to be something that we, you know, need to know about and so that we're not spending a lot of time doing this, uh, because nobody wants to waste taxpayer dollars, and I think, uh, there's no question in my mind, these chairs were in some way, shape, or form worth over $5,000 and should have been noted as such. But at the end of the day, I also don't want to spend the rest of the day talking about these chairs because they're gone, but I, I, I hear what, what the Commissioners are saying. We've got to do something to tighten this up to where, um, we don't get ourselves caught in a position where someone says, "Why did y'all, why did y'all let the fire marshal get rid of all these chairs?" And, and we're caught off guard, and it's a hard thing. So we, we may need to look at, you know, re, reviewing the policies, uh, we may need to look at revamping how purchasing works, because a lot of things, you know, purchasing gets to do, because they report to a purchasing board, and as Michael's aware, I've had the conversation with him, I, I plan to put an agenda item on to, to look at refurbishing and reshaping the way purchasing works, and I think the law provides us to do that. Um, so, um, I, I do think, you know, it's hard when we've got, uh, the purchasing agent who I think's a good guy and does a good job, but doesn't report to the Commissioners Court, it, it puts us in a, in a tough spot sometimes with, with situations like these. So, um, I, I think we just need to be very careful about this. I do think the chairs were worth more than, uh, $5,000. I think it should have been brought to the court. Uh, at the same time, I can see where someone may think that it wasn't worth that based on policies and procedures, but this could be one of those tweener areas, gray areas that, um, we just need to fix, because I, I just don't want this to happen anymore. Thank you.
So, so just to clarify, like, the-
Hold on, I've got a, a Commissioner-
Sure.
Look, I appreciate the time that we're putting into this. I mean, Commissioner's been very patient in the delays that have come and happened just because they, they have happened, life has happened. But, uh, I agree, uh, with Commissioner Chesney on a lot of what he's saying. I agree with the overall sentiment that we need to be careful of anything that, that's wasteful, right? That dollar amount, I, I agree, it may be somewhere in between. Uh, you learn from mistakes, you learn from something that was intentional, unintentional. I, I don't really want to get into that, especially because the former Fire Marshal is no longer here, and it's put on you to give us answers that you don't really necessarily know. It kind of sounds like I was going to put it on my kids, but I'll put it on myself. When I was a child, and I wanted to go get permission for something, that I'd go and find my parent wherever they were at, in the house or in the yard, and as long as they didn't say no, and I yelled out the question, then, okay, I'm free to do whatever I want. So maybe that's kind of what would happen here on the authority of it, but it's happened, right? I think all we can do is move forward. That's what I would like for us to do. I think we could, we can accomplish good policies that we tighten up in areas, get better for clarification. If there is an Attorney General opinion out there, um, now let's make sure that matches with the, the opinion that our county attorney is giving to us and gives us direction to move forward. I just, I want to be able to move forward on this. I mean, it, I know we need to look back and see maybe what happens, and if maybe, if there was something, um, ill-advised or, or even, I don't want to say illegal, but if it were to that point, I wouldn't want to say just ignore it. But I think we can learn from this process here, and I don't want to put more on you. I think that you've working in, within the realms that you have based on those policies. I, I do agree, I think property does decrease value over time. Uh, how is that determined? Maybe you shore that up. Um, I don't want to have a policy where we, uh, approve everything, every nut and bolt. That's not practical. Uh, so I do see why there's a limit, but I agree, I think that this may have been one of those areas where it's maybe not the value of the 40, 45,000, but was it maybe more than the 5,000? I don't know, that's where, I don't know how we get, how we get to that. So I, I would just like to say, you know, I think this is a very valuable item. Uh, I know we could probably put a lot more time into it, but I'm one of the mindset that we're probably going to have this a whole discussion again, and we're all going to say the same thing again at a future point. So maybe we've cut, you, you know, staff and everyone and God and everyone else has heard what we're saying here. Let's put something together so we can have discussion, tweak, ratify policy, and have something substantial that we can say we gained out of this experience, because I, I don't, I think, you know, we, we got, always have so much on our plate, and I'm trying to deflect that, but I just think we're probably going to have this discussion again, and we're all going to say the same thing again, and then maybe even learn more and have more points or counterpoints to make. So I'd just like to kind of get us moving along. I think we've all said where we, where we are at, and at, within a reasonable amount of time over the next few weeks or months, uh, that we can get something in place so that this doesn't happen again. And so if there is a question, then we, we, we know how to respond.
Sure.
And this is why it happened. Um, and, and so I, I just really want to kind of gear us towards that, because I know Juan still wants to chime in, and I just, like I said, I think there's, there's going to be an actual discussion and action item at some point in our future, whenever that is, and that's where we're going to talk it all over. So i- if we can, I'd, I'd love for us to move forward from this and, and all agree that we will bring this to be able to have actual policy insight and not just discussion about just kind of random of what's happened. Let's, let's make something happen today, and the way it's written is we can't make anything happen today other than give some direction to everyone that's here that we'd like to move forward and shore this up. So, uh, that's just kind of my comments. I, I don't know, I don't intend for them to be the end, but at least that's kind of what I wanted to chime in before you gave any more comment, so I didn't want to cut you off, but-
Sure.
That's kind of where I'm at, because it's just, we're going to keep going and, and we still got a whole lot of items that I think we're going to take a little bit more discussion and actually can be acted upon today rather than just one item that's listed as, as discussion only.
Commissioner, I, I agree with you, and Mike, all I'm, all I'm saying is, all of us that sit up here have given the task by the taxpayers or constituents to be frugal with taxpayer money, okay? We all have that responsibility. Now, it's, I take it as my responsibility to ask those questions, because I sit here and we are responsible for whatever goes on the, on the courthouse, uh, in, in any respects, whether we got to pay for a lawsuit or whatever we got to do. Uh, but, uh, this is why I'm asking, because the people I represent are asking, that we should try and spend our monies, uh, be, uh, better than what we're taking care of their monies. So with that, you know, I, I put it to bed. I mean, I'm satisfied with your, with your statement, your reasoning, and I'll, I'll ask Juan, see what he's got, if you're done.
So, so just to, to put this also, I just want to reassure the county, uh, that we've been doing this, uh, I've been with the county since 2008, uh, we've never had any issues on this subject. I don't believe we have a problem. I don't, I honestly don't believe we have a policy issue either, but I'm happy to hear, uh, suggestions to try and improve it. Um, but what we're talking about is control of items that were not turned into purchasing. So whatever happens to assets that are being moved from a workspace to a hallway back to its location, that is the area that I think we might want to look at as far as what instructions we want to give for how to treat those, and that specifically in this case would probably have helped the most. Uh, changing the value of an asset in my office is not going to help me if, uh, items are being moved into the hallway and then they disappear before they get back to their home, um, when they didn't come to purchasing. That, that rule change will have zero effect on that situation. But I think, and maybe Juan can speak to what his, uh, opinions are about how to address that, um, w- would actually help in that way. And I'm happy to work with Juan if, if he wants me to help with, um, writing something or making suggestions, uh, or if he, uh, I'm sure he's confident and able, able to make, uh, his own determinations there, and I support that fully, so, thank you.
Okay, Michael, thank you. All right, um, Juan? And if you could be brief so that we need, I've got a 12 o'clock deadline.
Yes, ma'am, I'll be brief. Uh, just want to make sure that the, uh, the chairs that were removed were removed because of COVID, uh, and it was with these four, for these, uh, four district courts, uh, and they were placed under lock and key under our area. And not only did they throw away our chair, those chairs, but they went to the fifth floor, and they threw away some shower pans and three other pieces of equipment that were under lock and key under our lock and key. So they kind of invaded our, our space. So I was hoping that in the future that there should be some type of written document that says that you can't go into somebody else's space and start throwing stuff away that, that's not, that's within your department. And, uh, and that's what happened here, Commissioners and Judge, is that somebody went in there and went into our space when it was under lock and key, and I talked to Bobby, and those chairs were in good condition, uh, there was nothing wrong with them, and, uh, they did, they did have a tag on them, just like the rest of the shares that are here, they do have a tag on them. And, uh, we don't throw anything away. Uh, I've been here for four years. Our process is that if we throw anything away, uh, we coordinate with Michael, we submit a paperwork, we document it to make sure that anything that we throw away, uh, goes through the proper procedures. So thank you.
Juan.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what was the value of those things, that shower pan?
Uh, one shower, uh, there were two shower pans, they were over $2,000. So, and not only that, but they threw us away some other stuff and started re, look, uh, getting some other stuff from our, from our security area in the fifth floor. And, uh, it was under lock and key, um, and I think the mistake here was that the Fire Marshal requested a, a master key, uh, and he went in there with the master key and went and invaded our, our space, or these two spaces, and, uh, threw away these, uh, two good items that we had, or not items, but items that were in good condition that shouldn't have gotten thrown away. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan.
Okay, in the interest of moving on, um, we will just move on. Lots to say about the following statements that we just heard. I'll just put it on the record that there's something called the Rule of Completeness. We just violated it, but at any rate, let's move on. Item number 17 is, um, uh, discuss and consider a settlement agreement. That is going to have to be done in executive session, Jenny?
Uh, yes, and I, I believe, I guess Tanya will be here for that.
Okay. And then item number 18 is the one that we said we would have a timeframe for Dr. Fagan. Item number nine, just hold that thought for a second. Item 19, I see it as an executive session item as well as item 20.
That's correct.
Okay, so just so those of you that are following, executive session for item 19, item 20, and, um, 17 are all going to go in executive. And what I thought I would do, because I saw Anna, she only has one item, I'd like to advance her item so she can get back upstairs. It's B1. I don't think it will take you too long, Anna, because the sheriff's also been waiting patiently, because this is a no-cost time extension. It, for the record, it's Grants DR 4245007. This is a FEMA award for generators for the, um, station and jail, and again, no-cost time extension. Anna?
Good afternoon.
Judge, can I, Judge, and that's why I didn't, I, I certainly don't think we have to hold hard to that 12 o'clock deadline unless those, if those people are still there, then we could just do that one. I, I suppose I didn't mean to circumvent, because I think we can get through this meeting pretty, pretty quick, but what-
I tried to, yeah. Okay, thank you for that. We'll let Anna fix, uh, continue, and I'll do as best I can.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, basically, it's just a no-cost extension. Uh, the term of this is August, the completion of work should be done by August 31st of this year, 2022, and, um, I understand that they're still working on it and they plan to complete it by September, October. So we're just going to request, um, to an extension to December 31st of 2022.
Okay, thank you so much, Anna. I'll make the motion to, um, to pass this no-cost time extension request.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, Juan left. Um, I don't know if he wants to come back, but should we go into, I, I, if we go into the Dr. Fagan, I'm going to have to ask for a motion for a little bathroom break, because that's going to take some time. Um, is Juan in the hallway?
Do you think a couple, the auditor stuff should be pretty quick?
I could do the auditor until Juan gets back. Let's do that. But I think he might just be in the hallway. Let me just ask Deputy real quick, like-
Oh, okay.
No? He left? Okay, they'll go get him. Let's move to item D, auditor, and, um, you've got a few items here, one through four. The first is a, a change in a simple name, a broker-dealer name from First Tennessee Bank to First Horizon Bank. We have to approve that, is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor, when we met the committee, it was approved that do this. They were our, 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 one of our brokers, and we just want to, uh, change the name.
All right, just change the name. I got a motion from Chesney, and I'll second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have a monthly financial from April of 2022.
Yes, Your Honor, I'll try to be quick on this. On, on, if we go to page four and five, you'll see where our asset balances are. For the general fund, we're, we're told, uh, fund balance is $62,780,464. If you compare that to the bar charts that you see on eight and nine, they're about where we think where we have in the last four or five years, so, so that it seems high, but we believe we'll continue on our normal process for this. Then next to important values on page 10 and page 11, that is where our health insurance funds are and our general liability, and the good name is our health insurance has a strong fund balance right now of $2.4 million. So, uh, if we then put that additional $1.7 million that we just talked about from Marpa money, we'll be close to $3 or $4 million in our fund balance. Now, we know there's always can be a catastrophic loss from any kind of medical insurance that we might have, so that's something we need to make sure we, we watch over and continue. On page 16, we see our balances where our, our, our income is for our revenue, and we're at 87% of our collections, and our taxes are at, right at 96%. That is very strong for our taxes with where, where we're at in our current fiscal year for the balance we have. If we go through our expenditures, there wasn't very many departments that were over budget. The first one is on page 28. Page 28 is our IT department. They have some small, uh, department requests that, that as you know, some of their, their values went up because of their software as going to some of the platform forms, and we're, we're taking that into consideration. Uh, it was, it was a very small, small amount. The next one in question is on page number 38. Normally on, on this legal aid, because we have, we pay the rental for this department is always over, over budget, but we have to continue maintaining this. As you look on page 39, you'll see that our, our magistrate court is, is significantly under budget now. Uh, last, this, during this time, the, the court made us, the Board of Judges made this decision to move salaries from 3,300 to 3,250, so that's why they're, uh, uh, over budget. We'll make sure we do the proper budget transfers that, that are needed for those particular functions. The next one in question is going to be on page, page 52. Page 52, the sheriff is a little bit over budget on some of his overtime salaries and some of his other services and charges. That's where some of our larger expenses are for the, the balance that we have for That's where some of our larger expenses are for the, the balance that we have for the sheriff, and the, the biggest one is for the MetroCom. Now, we do have one transaction we had that we need to move out of this particular function and move back into one of our COs because it was, I, it, it, expense incorrectly here, so that should fix that particular function. The last one in question is, is on page fifty-eight. Fifty-eight is emergency management, as we know that they have a lot of significant overtime and other services and, that they're going through that is causing some, some issues there. The, the final page I'll let you look at is page sixty-one. Page sixty-one is showing you a, a few of our budgets for our capital LA, and our capital LA is over budget because we've started, we're actually receiving some of our leased vehicles, and some of our leased vehicles require all the equipment to be put into the cars at this time, and we just didn't have the proper budget numbers for that, this next fiscal year we will. But the key point is, look at the very bottom, we see that we have 51.3% of the budget remaining for the general fund. However, for the year, there's only 41.6, that's a very, very strong number and very important for us to look at. Now, Judge, you'd asked a question on, uh, our project for the road district four, if you turn to page seventy-eight. You'll see towards the middle of the page on, on, on that, you'll see 1901 0400, road district four. Now, these are all cumulative totals, but the total amount remaining is $1,127,132 as of April. Now, if we remember, we'll take out the 16,000 we just approved, so that'll give us close to $1,100,000.
Okay, thank you for that update.
That's the, the financial report for, uh, April 30th, 2022.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve this April 2022 report? All right.
Sure.
I'll take yours as a second, Commissioner Chesney. All those.
That's fine, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Moving on, um, since we're on a roll here, Juan is back, but let's go ahead and do the P-card procurement card report from March 2022, Dale.
We want to try to bring this out as an issue, because this, these are credit cards expenses that have occurred, we want to make this a separate issue, so, so if there's any issue, now, these expenses have already occurred, but if there's any one that you want to question or get more additional information, please let me know. We'll bring it out, and then we can also bring the individual that we have, um, that, that you have questions for there. If you look on page eighty-one, that's where you show, you show that we have a breakdown of food expenses, and we have each one of the ones that have here for, for the food expenses as well as the description, and we have the receipts. Now, we'd be glad to go through each one of these and, and if you have sort of question on some of these issues, we can definitely bring this out at, at a later time on whatever question you might have, and we can also bring forward the, the department or the individual forward to answer the question you have.
But, and we have a question here, but the most important thing is that you have, there's vetting done, before they get paid, there is some vetting done with regards to these expenses.
The cardholder must re, the, the cardholder must value the, the, the transaction, they must include a copy of the receipt and then the, the balances. It must go to the Department Ed Force approval, it then comes to our, our office, our office is questioning it. If we have question, we question the department, then the department then works with purchasing to determine whether it's a valuable expense or not and can be used that way. Once we get assured that way, then it's processed and paid.
Right, I just want to make sure that everyone understands there's, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes done before we see it in order to provide the court with this information. Commissioner Chesney, you can unmute.
Thank you, um, yeah, I, the, the problem, and I looked through all this and I do have questions, but the problem is by the time we get that it's already been paid and to, to question is simply a question of something that's already been done. So, Dale, I think what we need to do is, is, is bring forth the P-card policies to, to totally review as an agenda item and an action item for the court to be able to act on, because I'll be honest, I, I don't even know where to find the P, how we, the P-card, uh, policy. Um, and, and I don't think getting these reports in, in arrears is going to help this court feel any comfortable, more comfortable about this or less, well, I won't say less, any more comfortable about it, because all we're seeing is something that we can't do anything about and it's already been done. And so to sit here and spend the time that I might want to spend on the, the meal questions, well, they've already been done, so it's, I'm kind of in a rock, between a rock and a hard place, so what I'd like to see is under, you know, and I can put it on, or you can put it on, however we put it on, to where we review the policies, you know, the P-cards, especially in relation to, uh, meals and, and how those are approved, those are the ones that I really have a lot of heartache on. Um, just because having meals paid for taxpayer expense doesn't sit well for me. I mean, if it's at a conference where the person has to be at that conference, that's one thing. Uh, if it's buying food for people, uh, you know, that's a, that's a different situation, so I, I could dissect the heck out of this thing, but I don't think that does any good for today. But then you're also asking for me to approve it, which is kind of an, an odd spot for me to be in, because I don't have, um, doubts that you did your job right or, or that this report doesn't represent a, a true picture of what's going on. But, but it, I don't want to, I don't like voting for something that I don't agree with, but I get that it, we're voting for the representation of it being an accurate report, so it, it, you know, it's, I know this is one of those really kind of weird deals and I'm not trying to kill everybody with my dialogue on this, but I haven't said a whole lot today, so I'm, I've saved up, but, um, I, I just think we've got to put this thing on the agenda to really look at the policy for P-cards regards to meals, and not just meals, but that's the one that, that sticks out for me the most, because I just, I just, and you know, it, sometimes you don't catch things until they, they get brought up and it, it's probably been going on like this since I've, you know, been in office, and so shame on me, I take my responsibility for not thinking about this earlier, but because of the issues that have been brought out, I, I definitely want to, to look at that, so I, I don't doubt that your, your report's representative and it's accurate. Uh, what I, I just don't like some of the expenditures, but I don't want to spend the rest of the day talking about those, I'd, I'd rather put an agenda item on and let's really look at what we want to do for P-cards in regards to food and other expenditures, because I, I think we've got, because we all talk about wanting to watch taxpayer dollars hard, and this is one of those areas that, that, I'm not accusing anyone, I'm just saying there could be some real problems that we need to address, so Dale, if you want to put that on as an agenda item, so it's appropriately styled, or if you want me to, let me know. So, my long-winded dialogue here is really a question of how do you want to do this, Dale, as far as you put it on, me put it on? What's the best way for you think we address this as a policy?
Well, Commissioner, this is a, a purchasing policy, I know Michael's, Michael's still present, if he's here, I think I can address that for him, because this is a, a purchasing policy that they have, so, uh, Michael, if you're still available?
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Commissioner, this will be along the same lines, uh, as we've discussed in the past. Uh, if the Commissioner's Court has, uh, suggestions to update the P-card policy, uh, they can send those to me and then I'll review those with the purchasing board. Um, and then if they authorize me to update the purchasing policies, then we'll update them, and then I bring them back to the court for the court to adopt. This court does not, this court does not have the authority to dictate the policy on purchasing matters. They have the ability to make suggestions, is my understanding. Um, and then I don't have the authority myself to make those changes either, I have to send them to the purchasing board and then they get to vote on what those changes occur.
And I think this is just another area that, where the purchasing department needs to be reporting to the Commissioner's Court, because your, your very answer right there says to the taxpayer, the county commissioners have no authority over purchasing policies other than suggestions, the county commissioners have no authority on people, how they spend their P-cards, the county commissioners have no authority over taxpayer dollars. So, that is exactly the reason.
Those are not words that I said at all.
I didn't, but that's, you didn't say, I mean, you didn't have to, but you just said the county commissioners can't make changes to how the P-cards are used, only the purchasing board can. That is an inherent flaw in our process that, that, that I will be putting on the agenda to, to revamp the entire purchasing department if the court so chooses to, to follow along. Because you, you've basically said, we have no authority, we can make suggestions, and it's up to the purchasing board on how people spend money in Oasis County by using their P-cards. So, that, um, those are my words interpreting what you just said. Tell me where my words are wrong, because we don't have any authority, we can suggest, hey, we, we can say we don't want anybody to use P-cards and that it's not up to us. We can suggest, we don't want anybody using food on P-cards, spending any money for people to use food, but those can only be suggestions, we can't change that only the, the purchasing board? That's what you said, pretty much, right?
So, what you're, uh, assuming is that your suggestions will fall on deaf ears and they will not be listened to or considered, uh, seriously and.
No, 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 oh, no, I'm not assuming that at all, I'm saying we have no authority, is what you just said, is that true or not true?
Correct, I believe the authority rests with the purchasing board on purchasing policy matters, yes.
Right, so, to the Commissioner's Court, I would really hope you're listening to this, as I know you are, because if the law is as I believe it is, and if I, you know, I've already asked Jenny again to, to, to re, to review it, I sent this to her several months ago, and she's been slammed with all the other emergencies that we've had. Um, because I don't believe this is the way it should go. Because we have to answer for all these expenditures, but all we can do is suggest, we can't make changes, and that is a very, very big distinction in how this goes, and it's great, we have two members of our Commissioner's Court on the purchasing board, I, I don't, I'm not at all pleased to not take that saying, and I don't think that purchasing board will listen to us. What I'm saying is that is a flaw in the system. If we're going to be held responsible for the dollars, then we have to be able to say yes or no on what things happen, or, or we, I don't know how we get held responsible for the dollars on something like this, because we, because we can't do anything about it other than make suggestions.
Yeah, and, and we're formed, we're formed by the laws of the Texas Local Government Code, that's, those are laws that I came into, uh, as I.
No, no, that's your fault, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not your fault, you're doing your job, I'm just, I'm just doing mine too.
Sure, sure. And then, uh, also would intimate, like the judge has intimated, uh, that Dale and I do review these charges, we do tell people no. Uh, Commissioner, um, uh, you can attest to that, uh, I believe you were told no on a meal purchase. Um, and we tell people no all the time about that. And, uh, we do review each one of these, uh, if their meal is, uh, determined not to be valid, then that charge is reverted back to the individual and removed from the report, so the, the meals, uh, that were read in court the other day, the list of items that were read out, every single one of those has been reviewed by both Dale and myself, determined to be valid, and every one of those were valid meal charges. So, I don't necessarily share the opinion that our, our P-card policy is broken or that the, uh, meals are, that are arriving on the agenda are not valid, I believe every one that I've seen are valid. Um, I review those, Dale reviews them before they get here, and so, but if we feel like there's some changes that the court has that they want to recommend, I will happily bring those, because the only vehicle I have is to take it to the purchasing board. So, if this body, uh, has suggestions, I will happily take those to the board, try to get them considered, and, and if it makes sense, they will adopt it and we'll bring it back here for the court to adopt. And when you adopt them at that time, then I can then, uh, operate under those rules. I, I have no choice but to operate under the rules that I have before me right now, and so that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, thank you so much, um, I'll just, uh, say let's move on, but I'll chime in that we also have Patello Brown, our outside auditor firm, who also, since these policies have been in place for many, many years, that audit us and that provides another layer of protection.
They review all policies and procedures.
They review all policies and procedures, and then there's another layer, and that's all those department audits that we get copies of all the time. So, there are department audits, there are external audits, there's our internal auditor, and there's this legislative action that the statutes create, just so you know, I believe to prevent abuse and fraud is why it's independent, it's why Dale is independent, it's so that commissioners aren't, um, influencing, I know this is the opposite of what Commissioner Chesney's saying, but I'm just saying, the reason the public policy exists is to do exactly what you're advocating, um, and that's why it's set up that way. So, why don't we, uh, you know, bring forth any good suggestions, as was mentioned, and, um, and, and those I know will be taken up. So, moving on, I don't know if we voted on it, Kara? We didn't. So, is there a motion to approve the report for March 2022 on item three?
Uh, Dale, one question to Dale, this is for March only, so what do you do October to February, right, on the P-cards?
This is for the period ending, I'll, I'll see what the totals are, this is for March, uh, the way our, our reports run, they run on a monthly basis, so there, at some point, there might be cumulative numbers here, but I'll make sure you get cumulative amount soon.
But the motion would just be for March?
Correct.
All right, so it's just for March, Commissioner? Is there a motion to approve March?
I move.
And a second?
Second.
All right, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Same side. Okay, now the budget change order, it's number fourteen for the year.
This, one, a quick budget change order, there's only a few departments that are requesting some funds. Uh, some of them are the large side, but, but the county clerk needed it for elections, because of the, the last few elections they had, they needed all supplies, but they had funds available to move in that area for court administration. Uh, they had to do, because that, uh, uh, one grant had to have a, a personal services fund for it, so we had to charge that, so we had to move some funds around, they did have those funds. The other balances on page two, it shows you our, our, the county library, uh, they had an increase in their phone expenses because of some of internet charges that weren't originally known. And our coastal parks had some other service charges for the balance they have, the funds they, they have available to move within their departments. Uh, we saw that, that they, they, the balances were, were accurate and, and justified, and we submit budget change order number fourteen for your acceptance.
Thank you, and I'll ask for a motion for that acceptance of the budget change order number fourteen. I'll move, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Um, I would, um, I'm really trying to get to that one o'clock hour and I, do you think yours is quick, Juan? All right, thank you, why don't we go back to C1, it's a change order number four, and it's for County Road 22 and 49, will you tackle that?
You may just make the motion, it would be real.
Yeah, it's just a cost savings on this one, it, it's for County Road 22 and 49.
And you recommend that?
We recommend it, it's for $2,000.
We always recommend saving money, okay? How about the motion then, Commissioner?
Move.
And a second, please? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then item number two is a funding source to discuss and consider to hire an ME firm to assist you, and, um.
Yes, Judge and Commissioner.
Give the background a little bit, that you have an option, I'm sorry, you have a, an opportunity, but no one has applied.
Yes, ma'am, we've, we've, we've gone out for advertisement for mechanical engineer, we haven't gone, uh, uh, some of those for, uh, for the job position. So, right now, we have a lot of mechanical, uh, work, uh, from chillers to boilers to, uh, electrical, and, uh, we're recommending that we can have, uh, or, or hire an outside consulting firm uh, that we can reach out to, so they can come over here and their mechanical engineers can come over here and, uh, like on a daily basis. Uh, if we need them today, they can be here within 15 minutes, probably somebody here local that we can reach out to, uh, that's my recommendation.
Would this be under $50,000?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we're, we're not.
Well, actually, forgive me, I'm not allowed to say that, right? It, we don't know, on a, on an engineer, uh, he would hire them and then they would contract, is that correct, Jenny?
Have to, yeah, once they pick it and they would negotiate all of that.
So, so what this item is, is it would be a motion to, to go through this process?
Yes, ma'am.
And then also to designate the funding source, since you have the position open, you have some savings right now.
I'm not sure if, Dale, if we can use the money from employee savings to consultant.
Maybe not.
Functions that they're unable to find, that I would say that the, the savings for this would, would be a, a legitimate use.
Legitimate use, okay.
Juan, I have a question.
Hold on, guys, hold on, everybody hang on, I'm going to do this correctly. So, that's the funding source, and now there's a motion, Commissioner?
Juan, my question is, uh, you don't have anybody right now that's helping you with that?
Uh, right now, right now, we do have, uh, a consultant that's helping us out with, we need somebody here local, Commissioner, that can, we can reach out probably within the next 15 minutes and, or 30 minutes and they can be here to, to assist us, especially, you know, there's issues that come, yes, countywide, uh, issues that come out, we can have them here today and they'll be here within 15 minutes, I say 15 minutes, but within 30, 45 minutes, I can have them here.
And Juan, you'll do your very best to continue to recruit and see if you can fill this position full-time.
Yes, ma'am.
This doesn't mean that we're not going to try to keep hiring.
No, ma'am, no, our, our goal is to hire somebody here.
That's right.
Better have somebody full-time.
Yes.
Well, right, I just want to make sure that this isn't like, you know, we're hoping to get somebody, in case anyone's listening out there and wants to apply, we want, we're looking for a mechanical engineer.
Juan, I wasn't done yet, my next question is, uh, do you need this other company, the comp, that's, they either from out of town or what? Are we going to be paying two separate companies?
That, that'll eliminate some of the time, uh, on their end, Commissioner, and, and it'll kind of help us out, over on the budget.
But is it beneficial to the county to have two separate?
No, it's, well, it won't be beneficial, uh, but, but in, in having somebody here local, it'll be beneficial into some of the cost savings for traveling and so on, and so on, and so on.
And so on.
Again, this is, this is countywide, not in particular for any.
Through, throughout, all the projects that we have, Judge, all the projects that we have.
Or the ones that are to come.
With the mechanical, electrical, lighting.
This is to fill your void, because you don't have a mechanical engineer, and there's a motion and a second. I would say, let us get this source for you, um, but it, it has nothing to do with anything but the void, the void is there, we need to fill it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Thank you, Judge, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Aye.
All right, and, um, again, forgive me, but Jenny, on this one, really all it was, was to identify the funding source. Ida, he still needs to come back to court and make the selection and go through the process of a contract. There's still work to be done, I think he needs to be, uh, directed into that, because my experience is, is they'll go out and do it and then we get into a situation, please make sure there's a follow-up email on the proper process.
On which is that?
On the one, he can't just go do it, he needs to come back and select, and then we have to have a proper contract. Okay, so the, all it was, was a funding source today, we told him this, but I think it needs to be written and, it needs to be documented, because that's not how he was going to do it, so now that we've done it, we can now move to the second step, which is to select.
Yeah, we'll have to have a contract.
We have to have a contract. And of course, we have a June 22nd meeting, so maybe we can, he can make, um, a selection. But again, if it's a funding source, you know, we, we took care of that already. Dale says it's appropriate to use those salary savings. And when we run out of salary, you're just gonna have to come back for an additional funding source. Okay? All right, that takes care of items D and E, and somebody said to me there's gonna be a table, so let me take care of that. It's item number 17. We've been asked by the court manager to table due to information she received that we are not, we're not ready. So I'll take the motion to table item 17.
Till June 22nd.
Till June 22nd.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll remind the court that item 19 and 20 is already in executive session. That means item number 18 is ripe, and we can deal with that right now. But I must confess that, uh, we have to take a little break for, for everybody's sake.
Judge, isn't that executive session also?
It's apparently not. This is, um,
But think it.
Jenny advised me that we had to take it up and open. Uh, Jenny, could you clarify?
There are, if there are legal questions about the contract, then yes, we can talk about those in executive. You may have some. I'd sent out the contract prior with a confidential change log to give you, uh, the ability to prepare for that. However, simple business negotiations, unless the court votes 5-0 that it needs to go into executive and there's a finding that any open negotiation would be harmful to the county, it's an open executive, uh, uh, I'm sorry, open session item.
So let me ask two questions. Is there a legal question?
Uh, let me just ask a, a, a question, question. So Jenny, are there any items in the final draft? Because I read everything you sent, I had comments, we had conversation, but is there anything different on the business points that we approved in this contract? Because that would be my only legal question would be, what are they? And if there's nothing, if this contract reflects exactly what this court passed, then, okay.
There are additional, uh, business decision items that are part of it. However, there, yes, there is one specific part that we would like to address with the court to have a decision made, uh, on a legal question regarding one aspect of the contract.
Okay.
And it sounds like that needs to go into executive session, right?
That's, that's brand new to me, so I'll do that. So that means that we'll take our break and then we'll go into executive session. Uh, so let's do it this way. Let me go ahead and make, read the magic language then, and that way it makes sense to everybody.
Judge, judge?
Yep.
Judge, hold, hold on, sorry. I just see, the only thing I see left on this entire agenda is human resources besides executive session. Is that also executive session or doesn't look like it?
No, I can do that. I just don't see anybody in the courtroom. Uh, let me, let me just.
I just didn't know if you were trying to get all of the stuff done.
I was, Brent, but I, I need to go to the bathroom.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
And I'm, I, I just, if I saw them here, I would do it. I'm, I'll be honest with you. I'll tell you what I'm gonna do. I don't need them here. I know everything about this item and Ida does too. We went over it with, with, listen to me, with Mark Gonzalez. There's so many Gonzalices. Uh, we, we went over with Mark Gonzalez. It's discuss and consider reclassifying Attorney Five to an Attorney Six. The difference is a $5,000 delta. Uh, this is an important position because there is somebody who's actually, um, interested in the position. They have 11 vacancies.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Same sign. This will carry over, Commissioners, to next fiscal year, I believe. I still think it's worth it.
That's, I kind of felt the same way, Judge, as I was trying to get through, but I'd need to stop.
I agree. I just always like to defer to, to the, you know, department head, but I think it's easier this way. So at this time, I'll give notice that executive session, um, uh, that we do elect as a court to go into executive session, and we do so as authorized by provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. We also do so in accordance with, uh, myself as the presiding officer announcing that we are, uh, subject to Vernon's Texas Code, Sections 551, 071, 72, 73, 74, 745, 76, 86, and 87. We're gonna be consulting with our attorney, including but not limited to matters relating to litigation, real property, gifts, personnel termination, uh, county advisory bodies, security device, economic development negotiations, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Of course, as always, upon completion of this session, uh, the court may come out into open session, take any action as deemed necessary and appropriate on items that we discussed in executive session. For the clerk, the time is 12:50 PM. I'll ask anybody that doesn't need to be here to clear the courtroom, and, uh, we'll take up all these matters that are listed and then come back on the record. And I do want to let you know that we have a window to have Dr. Fagan with us present till 2:00 PM. So I'm gonna let the clerk know that no matter what, we need to come back by 1:30, Jenny. Even if we're not done, I'll have to, I'll have to gavel out and in, okay? But at 1:30, Kara, if you wouldn't mind, okay? And that's the record, out of executive session, I need to announce now that we're gonna tackle one item in particular, and then we're gonna go back into executive session because we had several agenda items that we, we did not reach. But in the interest of time, um, that we're accommodating, uh, Dr. Fagan's schedule, we decided that this would be the best course of action. This item is styled 18, number 18, under the regular agenda. Discuss and consider adopting employment contract for the new medical examiner. And I would ask if there's a motion coming out of executive session with this in mind. Okay, so let me, would you mind if, if you, if I?
Yeah, second.
I'll second, but could I interest you in making your motion contingent upon the county attorney finishing the items that were legal in regards to, uh, the clauses that we discussed?
That's my motion.
Okay, and, um, and again, um, I seconded and, is there any discussion? I just wanted to say, there's a, there was an item that was legal that we addressed. And Dr. Fagan, so you don't worry, and your attorney, it's the same item that you've already addressed with Francisco, uh, some of those policy additions that you sent, as well as a particular clause that they're gonna work with you on. They said they would need some more time to finalize. Uh, but I do believe that we are complete and thorough in our, in the contract review, and the court now has a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
So that means your contract has been approved, again, pending these finalizations by the county attorney with you and your attorney. And, um, we can, we can finally say, even though you have not moved here, welcome aboard. One of the things I wanted to brief, um, just the audience and at home, and I know the media's here, is, um, how incredibly thorough you have been with not only your own contract, but with the, I would call them the precepts of how you see a very strong medical examiner's office for the future of Nueses County. This includes personnel, resources, facilities, training, certifications, uh, uh, books, I mean, it, it, the litany of how you have brought forth all of the, again, the pillars of how you see the future of forensic science, forensic institute, forensic pathology, is going to build the forensic, uh, forensic medical institute of our future. So I'm complimenting on the thoroughness, the details, and of course, our staff, who's been working with you since the day that, uh, this court made the selection. And again, today is that day where we get to say, we approve this contract, and now we welcome you on, I believe it is July 18th, that will be your official start. Okay?
Welcome.
Thank you. Any, thank you. And Jenny, um, just as a follow-up timeline for Dr. Fagan, you'll be in contact with him today just to finalize those, how, how the timeline will, will go to finalize.
Absolutely. We've been in communication. We will continue, and all the changes are ones that have already been discussed.
Super. Okay, that was a long wait for such a quick, uh, motion, but, uh, rest assured, we were thorough too. We were very thorough as well on our side. So thank you. We understand you're headed back and you're dismissed. If you have any comments, all right. Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Having said that, it was suggested that there were some matters that were taken up in executive session that we could act upon now, and, uh, that would be in relation, uh, to, um,
19.
Thank you. Item 19. Is there a, um, motion regarding, uh, notice of damages regarding negligent claims of Edna Penya?
Motion to refuse, to deny the claim, to deny the action?
And authorize the county attorney to write that letter.
Second.
Second.
And to authorize the county attorney to write the letter, may we include that in your motion?
Sure.
All right, there's a motion and a second by Commissioner Mattis. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of, uh, 18 and 19. 17, as you recall, was tabled. And then, um, on item, uh, number 20, I believe there is a motion, uh, to continue negotiation. Is that correct, uh, Commissioners?
Second.
I'll take out motion and a second?
As, yeah.
As directed, as directed.
Right.
The motion is to continue negotiations. It's, really, it's to direct the county attorney to continue negotiations with Core Recon LLC. That's item number 20, and there's a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Kara, that concludes, in my mind, the regular agenda. However, as I noted earlier, for the record, uh, there's still two more items that need to be tended to. Is that how you see it too? Do you see the regular agenda item concluded? Okay.
Except for number two was going to, my understanding?
Number two. Hold on, let me go back. Gosh, Jenny, that's great, uh, but we hadn't had that discussion yet either in, um, but you're right, in, in executive session. But we will. Yeah, yours, Jeff was here and he made.
So is it concluded then?
No, it needs to come back to executive. So with that, once again, and I do apologize for those of you that are coming in, but, um, I'll ask you, um, to indulge me in that we are gonna go back into executive session. And at this time, it's 2:44 PM to conclude the items that were not finished. And I've already read, uh, the language once before, and so I'll just, uh, say that I echo that this is permissive under Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, all the appropriate Vernon's Texas Code sections. And we will come out upon completion of this executive session and take any actions needed. So, uh, we'll ask Keith to to a PM. And, um, we have come out of executive session, and Commissioners, we do have, um, we do have one item to take up. Let me double check that. Yeah, we had mainly consultations left, but one item is item number two, Kara. We realized we had not made a motion on item regular agenda number two. And so at this time, um, I'm going to, uh, really, the, the agenda doesn't give me too much latitude, Jenny. But what I can say is that unless you, you think it gives me latitude, in lieu of, how about this? In lieu of any order, we'd like, can I, can I make a motion? In lieu of any, uh, order, the motion is to, uh, approve the concept of the Restoration Center and direct Dr. Xavier Gonzalez, within 30 days, if he can do it quicker, wonderful, but within 30 days, bring back to court as an agenda item to have a full, you know, cost estimate on the projects that he's proposing that were on that last slide. And also to come up with that, that plan of action that the court, and maybe even a timeline, that the court could, uh, approve. So we're looking for the actual project, cost estimate, and timeline. But today's motion is to, to start that process and to, um, and to approve the concept. And I'd like to make that the motion, and Gonzalez, would you?
Uh, prove your concept is good.
Would you make the second? Yes, sir?
Second.
Second from Gonzalez.
The concept, yeah.
And is, any further discussion? Other than it was a very great presentation, and I'm certain we cut him off, so maybe he'll finish next time again with those details. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Believe it or not, I believe that's it, but I'm gonna have Jenny take a quick look again. And I'd ask while she's looking, do you have any adjournments in memory?
No, I don't.
Do you have any, Commissioner Mattis?
Uh, no, I don't.
Commissioner Chesney?
No.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I have one.
One, okay.
Was a vote had on E?
Let me look, Jenny. Yes, while you were out. It was right before lunch. We did it very quickly, or right before executive session. We approved the Human Resources Attorney Five position to six?
No, E and executive.
Oh, E and executive, forgive me.
Oh, we have to come back and say we're supposed to make a motion that they wanna go back and, and re, uh, contact the other attorney with the cap of
Negotiate as instructed, but
Cap of $1,000.
To continue negotiations. For E.
Is that, where is that on?
That's on executives. It wasn't.
Is it not on the regular?
It, it was not.
Y'all came back from executive and y'all, y'all did.
We did Edna Penya?
Correct.
On D. Mm-hmm, and on E?
But y'all didn't do E. I don't remember.
Right. It just says, consider taking appropriate action. The action is just to continue negotiations as directed.
Yeah, with, with a cap of $1,000 and it doesn't settle.
You only make a motion though.
And the county attorney takes over. That was my motion that I was gonna make.
Well, the motion was to reevaluate after they, um,
That wasn't my motion. I don't know what motion you're talking about.
Okay.
You're making that motion now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion that we allow them to do one more, uh, and one more contact with the other attorneys, to see if they're willing to, at this point, withdraw their lawsuit and the cap of $1,000. And if not, then, then we, we stop with the, with the attorney that we, that we hired ourselves and let the county attorney take over the negotiations. That was my, my sense of it.
Just for clarity. You're gonna contact?
No.
Your attorney?
No, county attorney will, will, will contact the, our attorneys.
Okay.
And buy them that they have one more opportunity to go ahead and negotiate with the other attorneys to try to close out the case and a cap of $1,000 for additional fees.
Okay.
Okay, and if it doesn't comply, doesn't agree with that, then county attorney will take over the case.
Is that a sec, you need a second? I can't, I can barely hear, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I'll second. I can barely hear, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time with Wi-Fi, I apologize.
And I'll call for discussion. And I feel like if you would amend your motion to reevaluate afterwards, you would allow the county more options, that would be a better motion that you could get consensus on. And would ask that you at least amend to that, as was per the county attorney's advice.
That's your advice?
Yes, Judge, I would hate for, or, or Commissioner, I would hate for you to not have an option to evaluate based on new information. And, uh, at this point, leaving more options open, you, you don't lose anything by that.
Still keeping the same attorney?
Reevaluating after this, the negotiation that the court is directing.
Whether we keep him or go back with county attorney, that's what you're talking about?
Yes, making that decision after you get more information.
Okay, if he's okay.
Okay, if he's okay.
Will you amend your motion to to comport with that?
I guess, you know.
All right. And Chesney, will you second that?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Good catch on the letter E. Anything else?
Very good catch. Good job.
Do you want the cap of a thousand? Is that still?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the motion.
Okay. And then, and to reevaluate?
Then we reevaluate at that point.
We're evaluating, reevaluating.
Okay.
And any other items? Hearing none, we'll move straight to emergent, uh, uh, adjournments in memory, Commissioner Gonzalez.
This is on, uh, Antonio de la Garza. Age fifty-four, passed away on May the eighth, twenty twenty-two. Tony was born on May the fifth, nineteen sixty-eight to Juan Manuel de la Garza Senior and San Juana Adame de la Garza. He graduated from W B Ray High School in nineteen eighty-seven. Tony was employed by C C A D at the, over the eleven years. He loved his job and was a committed employee to the blade shop and to the area of facilities. He was always ready and willing to learn and to get the job done. Some of his previous employers were Brand Scaffolding, Corpus Christi State School, Bay L T D, Dynamic Industries, Offshore U R S A Platform. Tony was known for making friends and enjoying his friendship anywhere he went. His sense of humor and playing pranks were he was crazy Tony. Will be tremendously missed. Tony had a love for boxing and began training at seven years old. He was very proud of and raved about the trophies he won while he was in school. Tony's passion for boxing or training under Coach Davila led him to become a Golden Gloves champ in nineteen eighty-eight. He then continued his boxing career professionally as Tony the Tiger. On weekends, there was nothing he enjoyed more than fishing with his best friend, Rego, and loving fishing competitor, Erks. He will always be remembered for his devotion to family. He was a loving husband, father, son, brother, uncle, brother-in-law, cousin, and nephew. Tony is preceded in death by his father, Juan Manuel de la Garza Senior. Father-in-law, Il, Il, Ilorio G. Sandoval. Paternal grandparents, Andres and Severa Adame. Paternal grandparents, Antonio and Manuela de la Garza. Tony is by, Tony survived by the love of his life. Cecilia Sandoval de la Garza. Of twenty-five years of marriage and only son, Antonio Jesus de la Garza. Mother, Janie de la Garza, brothers, Angel de la Garza and Corina. Joe Luis de la Garza and Juan Manuel Junior de la Garza and Ashley. Mother-in-law, Adalia Sandoval. Sister-in-law, Barbara Zapata Luis, Monica Luera and Anthony. And brother-in-law, Tomas Sandoval with Roxanne. Nieces and nephews. Louis, Christian, and Sebastian Zapata. John, Anne, and Maya Luera. Eladia and Alisa and Isla, Isel Sandoval. Tino de la Garza, Joe, Angel Moreno. Isaiah Castillo and Eva Rey de la Garza. Mr. Antonio de la Garza will be missed by his family, his friends, and, uh, continue to pray for the family and continue to write the cold condolences to them. May that he rest in peace. That's it.
Okay, um, Commissioner Mattis, did I ask you already? Did you have any?
Yeah, I think I don't have any.
I asked, right, everybody. Okay. So I'll just conclude with one, and that's that, um, that Ron and Polly Navarro announced sad news of the passing of their grandson, Lee Andrew Navarro, who was the love of their life for twenty-three years. He was born on August thirty-first, nineteen ninety-eight, and he passed away on June the second. They lovingly raised him since birth, and he did pass away peacefully and full of joy at his residence with his grandmother at his side, well, grandmother and grandfather by his side. And they note that while the angels escorted him to the pearly gates of heaven to his next adventure, those of us who mourn him will celebrate his life on the next few days with sadness and hope that a change is truly going to come to lift us in spirit to join Lee Andrew in his new quest with the Lord in heaven. And I also receive that, uh, for any of you that know Ron, there is a, um, a mass at Saint Peter's on June the sixteenth at, um, followed by the viewing at ten A M. And so we're sending our condolences to the Navarro family at this time of their mourning and to those that you read earlier today and all those who are suffering. I will, uh, mark the clock at, um, four, four, five P M. And adjourn us for the day, uh, only, wait, you know what? A bit of a housekeeping. Tomorrow, we, we do have a budget workshop. And we will be meeting at ten thirty, uh, is when the budget workshop will start. However, just to remind everybody, I will gavel us in at. At nine fifteen. And, um, but I will announce at nine fifteen that we will start at ten thirty. So just a little bit of housekeeping and warning as to what we're going to do. And with that said, um, we'll see you tomorrow. It's four, four forty-six P M.